The Eau Claire City Council is now in session. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Beaton.
Here.
Bergy. Christopherson.
Here.
Emmanuel.
Here.
Gregert.
Here.
Klinkhammer. Lor.
Here.
Weld.
Here.
Worthman.
Here.
And good evening. Before we get started, just, and I think there's some staff members out in the hallway that are helping direct, but if there is need for additional seating, the North Conference Room is open and available for anyone that wishes to sit in there or wait in there until your agenda item comes up, and we'll try and stay in touch with everybody so that you still have a chance to come and speak. With that, I'd like to welcome all of you to our March 9th meeting of the Eau Claire City Council. I want to extend a sincere welcome to everyone joining us here and then also those that are watching us remotely at home. During our Monday meeting, the Eau Claire City Council conducts public hearings, listening sessions, and public discussion where residents in our community are invited and encouraged to ask questions and weigh in on important decisions we will be making at our legislative session either tomorrow at 4:00 PM here in these chambers or in the coming weeks and months ahead. We want to thank Valley Media Works for live streaming this proceeding. To those of you not able to join us and to watch, please visit ValleyMediaWorks.org or visit Channel 994 on Spectrum Cable. It is also simulcast at 101.9 FM, and you can find past meetings on YouTube under the Chippewa Valley Media Works channel. If you plan to address the council this evening, I will briefly review the protocol. Once an agenda item is introduced, staff will present on that item, and following the presentation, council may have questions for that staff member. When they are finished with the questions, we will then open it up for public input. When it is opened, please come forward one at a time. When you approach, please begin by announcing your name and your address, and then begin sharing your comments. We welcome you to speak for five minutes. You will see three lights on the podium there. The first light is green, which will illuminate when you begin speaking. It will then turn yellow when you have one minute left, and then it'll start blinking red when your five minutes are up, and I'll politely ask you to wrap up your comments. Sometimes council members have questions for you when you're finished speaking, so if you would just give us a minute before stepping away from the podium to see if there are any questions from the council members. If you wish to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. And there's a sign-up sheet on the back of the table, and again, this will be at the end of the meeting, again, on items that are not currently on our agenda. You're welcome to sign up on that sheet in the back. And lastly, if you're not comfortable speaking at the podium, you can fill out a comment form on the back table there as well, and those comment forms will be shared with council members tomorrow. And as always, if you wish to reach any of us, our contact information is on the website as well as on that back table back there, and you're welcome to reach out to us this evening or tomorrow prior to our meeting or at any time. With that introduction, we'll get on to our first order of business. There are four items scheduled for public hearing on tonight's agenda. Item number one is a public hearing on a proposed street utility and sidewalk improvements on Water Street to Second Avenue. This item was postponed from a February 11th, 2020 council meeting. Mr. Solberg, good evening.
Good evening. I will go over briefly what was presented in February and the subsequent happening since then and what staff is recommending today. So, the original proposal included a one-block reconstruction of Water Street from Second Avenue to First Avenue. It included a full replacement of utilities. There is 100-year-old water main in this section of Water Street. It included new pavement, base course, curb and gutter, sidewalk, and boulevard restoration. The project proposed to extend bike lanes where they currently end at First Avenue to the intersection with Second Avenue. At the intersection with Second Avenue, there is an existing right-turn lane that has been striped off and prohibited from vehicles to use, and the original proposal included just replacing that and striping it off. If it were to be used in the future, the stripes could be removed, but the curb was in the same location. We have the existing left turn that goes into campus that is currently there, and we have the bike lanes that are denoted with the green spots. The bike lanes contain four feet of asphalt and a foot and a half of gutter, for a total of five and a half feet on the south side and then along the curb on the north side. As we approached Water Street and First Avenue intersection, we had a bike box for the eastbound travelers, bicycle travelers, but not a full bike box on the westbound approach on the east side of the intersection. We proposed just a smaller bike box because of the cost to paint a bike box in the future pavement marking changes on this side of the project. We proposed striping the crosswalks at the current locations and conducting the construction operations for this under detour route. During the Tuesday meeting, the project was postponed to gather additional input from UW Eau Claire. One discussion that came up at the hearing and on the Tuesday last time this was at council was the inclusion of a scatter intersection that would be at the intersection of Water Street and First Avenue. And what this does is with a hold phase, if the red traffic signals hold traffic, then pedestrians are able to move in any direction they want through that intersection. These are four-legged intersections, so you have a cross pattern with the square on the outside. Water Street and First Avenue is a three-legged intersection. We don't have the fourth leg going into campus, so it forms a V instead of a cross. This was a request from the city's Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee and discussed at the hearing, but it was not a recommendation at the time from staff. After the project was postponed, we met with UW Eau Claire Facilities staff, and then I met following the UW Eau Claire Facilities staff meeting, I met with UW Eau Claire B-PAC, went over the project, went over some of the items that were discussed during the public hearing with both groups to get additional input on the project. The UW Eau Claire staff concurred with the original scope of the project but had some additions. They were neutral towards the scatter crossing. They were supportive of the wider bike lanes, and they had requested rapid rectangular flashing beacons, which are those yellow enhanced pedestrian crossing lights at the pedestrian crossing at Second Avenue. Following that meeting, when we met with UW B-PAC, they again concurred with the original scope but had additions. They were supportive of wider bike lanes, as was, I guess, UW Eau Claire staff. So, in a proposal that we're recommending today, we are recommending adding an additional foot to each bike lane, so we would have five feet of asphalt and then additional width with the concrete portion of the gutter. UW Eau Claire B-PAC requested a smaller radius in the northwest quadrant of First Avenue. Requested camera detection to be added at the intersection, so when you're in a bike lane, the signals will pick up a bicycle and will actually turn to allow that movement. They requested a dashed bike lane connection across the intersection. There are two green areas where the bike lane stops and it picks up again on the intersection, and they requested the dashes that would help guide you across the intersection and line you up. They also felt that an RRFB at Second Avenue was a good idea and requested that. And they requested a narrower Water Street crossing at Second Avenue where that right-turn lane was striped. They had requested that. The curb line be placed where the pavement marking was, and where there was pavement would be grass. So, with the feedback that we took from the additional stakeholders, we are proposing the original scope that we had a month ago plus a few minor additions. We're still proposing to stripe First Avenue crosswalks as is and add a pedestrian lead-only delay. With the UW Eau Claire B-PAC and UW Eau Claire Facilities, they were neutral, they were both neutral towards that scatter crossing. And the one item of note, there's 98% of the pedestrians crossed this direction and 2% crossed this direction when we had some peak hour counts. And one of the concerns that we had feedback from our law enforcement partners as well as from doing research in other communities is if there isn't enough pedestrians in here going all directions, then your compliance with stopping tends to suffer with that if they don't see a reason to stop. And with a smaller portion of pedestrians, only 2% crossing this way, the university felt and, I guess, staff, our engineering staff feels that this is operating safe the way it is, and if it's operating safe and there isn't a strong need, we're recommending at this time not to mark this third diagonal leg for a scatter at this location. So with that, with our recommendations is to stripe it as we've originally proposed. Add the camera detection to the existing signals. Add a foot of width to the original bike lanes. We will reconstruct the curb and gutter at Second Avenue to make that crossing a little bit more narrow. We're proposing to reconstruct the curb ramp at the south side of Water Street, First Avenue, two times wider than the existing. Right now, it's only a single panel at this location, and we're proposing to stripe it wider due to the large volumes of pedestrians, so it would be the same width as this pedestrian ramp and this pedestrian here. So, that would be a minor change. And then we are also proposing to stripe the turning radius at the northwest quadrant of First Avenue and Water Street, so it'd be a little bit narrower. It wouldn't be physically moved, the curb wouldn't be physically moved, but we'd have a paint in there, so it'll keep cars a little bit tighter into the intersection. But if buses return to that location in the future or large trucks with the sonotek center opening up, and if we have that, they wouldn't be hopping the curb to make that corner. So, what that looks like with what we're recommending, this location here, the curb line is pulled a little bit to the south, and this is now going to be grass where there is pavement. Bike lanes, although you can't notice it, are a foot wider than they previously were. And at the intersection, we have the green bike box that lines up across from here. Just because there's a lot going on here with the crosswalks, we didn't recommend having the skips go through here, but when we mark this location in the future with a Water Street bridge overlay, that's something we can look at with the potential bike box here in the future. Also, if there would be a desire to revisit, one advantage of having the diagonal crossing is if motor scooters are in town and they're allowed to use the on-street bike lanes and they're allowed to use the sidewalks on campus, if you were on a motorized scooter at this location, you could cross and stay on the street if they're prohibited on city sidewalks. So, there would be a different usage for that potentially, depending upon the numbers of scooters that there would be or motorized bicycles that could help that visual reinforcement for having that diagonal leg in here in the future. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Any questions from council? Councilmember Beaton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Solberg, for the presentation. I'm really pleased with all of the updates to the plans, and I appreciate you getting all the feedback from the university. So I noticed both the facilities and also the B-PAC recommended a flashing beacon at Second.
Yes.
Is that not incorporated in the new plans?
So, we did not recommend that for two reasons. Spacing, there isn't a federal standard for spacing from an RRFB to signalized intersections, but we searched for peer communities. And for this crossing, we will have pedestrian crossing signs like we normally have for that, and due to the proximity and the distance between Second Avenue and First Avenue, we did not find any other peer communities that when they have a more formalized policy had that short of spacing between it. So, that was one reason is just the proximity to First Avenue and the signals. And then the second that was brought up at the B-PAC meeting is something that would add possible cost would be with the cars parked along here, would we need to go up and over the top, so you would have maximum visibility for those shining beacons off to the side. And then that would take an $8,000 to $10,000 RRFB, and it might make it $20,000 or $30,000. So, given the combination of the two, we wouldn't, if there wasn't a signalized intersection at first, we wouldn't rule it out just based on that cost, but with the combination of a signalized intersection close, we just felt that we would try to use the RRFBs more judiciously. They work great where we've installed them, and we've been getting a lot of requests for those, and we want to try and make sure we use them in the best locations so people don't become desensitized to them. So, we thought we would try with some of our brighter, newer pedestrian crossing signs here to start with at least.
Great, thanks.
Councilmember McGregor.
Thank you, President Weld, and thank you, Mr. Solberg. Could you speak a bit to the emerging technology of these e-scooters and e-bikes and our current city rules? Because my understanding is that they're not allowed on, like, city multi-use paths or sidewalks right now, but the state has now allowed communities to be able to make that choice. And I know the university is exploring, you know, introducing at least e-scooters at this point and allowing them on their sidewalks. And I guess the reason why I bring that up is this intersection would be the only way, you know, for people to connect with the bike lanes on First Avenue from the Haas Fine Arts and Campus Footbridge area because they wouldn't be able to use the underpass, the trail underpass underneath Water Street. So I guess my question would be, you know, the scatter, you know, intersection or that extra angle coming north to the bike lane would be potentially necessary in order for people to not go the wrong way on the bike lane on the west side and then also not use the sidewalk?
I believe e-scooters would not be allowed on our sidewalks over here on-street. That would be a use for that. The one wildcard with that is usage for that. I don't know if you have, you know, a large number of scooters that would be using that, then you would have the visual reinforcement that is essential to keep the compliance. If it's marked and we're two or three or four years out until we start having scooters, you may introduce just that uncertainty or that differentness with the crosswalks that you may inadvertently have something. But to add that crosswalk, there is a pole that is in this location that gives the signal head for this crosswalk, and one could be mounted to that, and it's just a matter of adding the stripes in the future for it. All the physical features would be there, it would be just the marking features, you know, when or if the scooters do come to town. I know we were working with a bike rental, and we passed an ordinance for governing that. We didn't have a successful vendor come last year, so I don't know for a year out or three years out, but it would be something that at least the hardscape is there to add when that need would arise for it. And I don't know if, you know, I don't know if ordinances will change if they're at that point, when they do come to town, if they would be allowed in bike lanes or if they'd be onto the street, it would give the council the opportunity at that time to determine where the appropriate place for those would be to.
Thanks. Any other questions from council? I don't see any. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. This is a public hearing, so anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item, you're welcome to come up. Again, I'll ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item. Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number two, which is a public hearing on proposed street utility and sidewalk improvements on Lake Street, Second Avenue to Fifth Avenue. Again, Mr. Solberg.
Okay, and just to make it a fun Monday, this should be our last street hearing of the year for us, so thank you for your patience. This Lake Street starts from Second Avenue, our project this year, Second Avenue and runs to Fifth Avenue. It's a mill and overlay project. The utilities are, were replaced less than 30 years ago in that section. We have, so we're proposing that the pavement surface is starting to get worn, we're proposing to mill out two inches of asphalt and place two inches back down. What we are also proposing in the engineers' reports are marking on-street bike lanes from First Avenue to Fifth Avenue, even though we're only milling and overlaying from Second Avenue to Fifth Avenue. With that comes parking restrictions to the north side of Lake Street from Third Avenue to Fifth Avenue. We're proposing marking a bike box on the east side of First Avenue where the bike lanes that were recently striped coming over the Lake Street Bridge stop. And then we're also, we've taken many complaints for the speed of traffic on Lake Street as they approach the crosswalk and the transit station at the bottom of, I guess, Lake Street Hill at Second Avenue. So we're proposing to relocate the transit stop, a crosswalk, and then accompany it, since it is a dual purpose with transit and a crosswalk, with an RRFB at that location up at Oxford Avenue by the courthouse. And finally, the Lake Street is a route in the Safe Road to School Plan, so the Safe Road to School Plan recommends marking crosswalks on the side streets, which are just the single lines, two single lines to help channelize children to Lakeshore School. So what that looks like with the drawings, we'll go from west to east here, and Fifth Avenue on the left side of the screen, we have the existing configuration. The curb and gutter stays in the same location, we're just milling off the surface, the worn pavement surface, and putting a new pavement surface down. We have parking along the south side of Lake Street. We have a five-foot bike lane adjacent to the parking lane. We have 11-foot travel lanes, and then we have five feet of asphalt with two feet of concrete curb or gutter for the north side. So the north bike lane, which heads west, is two feet wider than the eastbound just because of that gutter. We're proposing replacing the existing crosswalks where they're currently marked, so at Fourth Avenue, there's a crosswalk marked, continuing the cross-section as we head to the east. And as we approach Oxford Avenue, a transit stop would be relocated to this location. We have transit pads at diagonal corners here, a crosswalk and an RRFB located here, and the bike lanes continue down the hill. And this stretch, we don't have updated aerials since we reconstructed this stretch, but the, this is new asphalt from a couple of years ago, and the bike lanes continue through this location, although we would not change the pavement, we would just change the pavement marking, and it would come to the intersection of First Avenue. This has been redone last year, and the green just denotes the bike boxes that we would be proposing with the project to get traffic across heading towards Carson Park. The public involvement we held for this, we were, talked with B-PAC with the project, and they recommend the bike lanes and also with the acknowledgement that it does restrict parking along the north side of Lake Street. They recommended a bike box on the east side of First Avenue, again, to help get the bicyclists across that busy intersection, and they suggest consideration of relocating the crosswalk and the transit stop as we had proposed up to Oxford Avenue. I was at the Historic Randal Park Neighborhood Association last week, and they were recommended or voted unanimously to recommend the bike lanes, acknowledging again that it restricts parking because it is a, Randal Park, Historic Randal Park does have a stressed parking environment, but the discussion at the Neighborhood Association was affirmative towards the bike lanes. And then we did receive a letter from Eau Claire County that I believe was shared with you, and they encouraged leaving the transit stop and the crosswalks down at Second Avenue. They favor the existing right-turn lane. There's a four-lane section that comes from First Avenue and it stops at Second Avenue, and they favor leaving that right-turn lane as is to channel traffic into Oxford Avenue into the courthouse. And they were not in favor of further restricting parking along Lake Street, which would be necessary for bike lanes. So, the letter was absent on the bike lanes, but not acknowledging and endorsing the further restriction of parking wouldn't make the bike lanes possible. So that was our main feedback that we had, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Any questions from council? I don't see any. Thank you very much. There's also a public hearing, this agenda item. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this item? Good evening.
Good evening. I actually was hoping to speak to the Water Street project, and I was in the overflow room, and I ran down here, and it had closed by the time I got down here. I was wondering if, with your permission, I could speak to the Water Street reconstruction project.
That's okay, certainly.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And I say my name and...
Please, and address.
Address, thank you. Katie Wilson, Eau Claire, 602 East MacArthur in Eau Claire. And I work as a health educator at the university, and so the Water Street intersection is a very big access point for bikes and pedestrians. And the biggest thing I wanted to do tonight is thank you for delaying this or postponing this decision or this vote until this week so that we had time from the Bike and Pedestrian Committee on campus to weigh in on it. We really did appreciate that opportunity. If you've ever been down on that intersection, you can see that bikes and pedestrians are moving in and out of campus rapidly, and it's a main access point for folks, and so we really appreciate that. We did send a letter, and I think it made its way into your packets, so if you have any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer them. I think the main thing that we wanted to support was camera technology. We really think it's important that bikes are recognized as vehicles on the road and can cross and not have to wait. There's some ordinance that says you can wait a certain amount of time, and then you can cross if you're not getting the light. It's really nice to get the light and be recognized as a vehicle on the road. If any of you have ever been a bicyclist in Eau Claire, that's a nice recognition that we're there. So that was one of the main points. We really didn't have much of an opinion on the diagonal V crossing, the scatter-type crossing. We kind of all abstained from that vote, and as you can imagine, we were in support of the wider bike lanes and anything to make pedestrians and bikers more visible, such as the RRFB if that's feasible at the Second and Water Street location. So I really appreciate you letting me speak.
Yeah, sorry for not giving you time either.
I literally did run down. It's like, all that, it's done. Yeah, so I'd answer any questions if anybody has them.
Does council have any questions?
Thank you, and thank you to Mr. Solberg for, yeah, thank you to Mr. Solberg for coming to our committee meeting as well last week. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to agenda item number two in regards to Lake Street? Certainly.
Hi. Sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening. Loretta Keim, 419 Lake Street. I'll put this up here. I had a couple of questions. I've never been to a meeting before, so... Would we get a notice in the mail or something when this is gonna, if this is gonna happen? Because there was no date on the letter.
Sure, if I could, if you could maybe give me all your questions, and then we'll have Mr. Solberg come up and...
Yeah, so there's a notice that we're gonna get when there's gonna be a start date as far as winter parking. So, the letter didn't say there was gonna be a bike lane on both sides of the street, just on the south side. So now there's gonna be a bike lane on the north side. Is there gonna be parking for people on the, what side am I, I forgot what side I'm on?
Yes, so I think, again, that would be pending tomorrow's legislative session and whether or not that's approved.
Right, so I wanted to know about, you know, winter parking because if there's a bike lane on that one side, you can't park on that side, so is there gonna be alternate parking because, I mean, the college kids do not shovel the alley.
Sure.
So it's, you know, miles high. And then how, if this does go through, how would we get billed for it? One-month sum? Would it go on taxes, installments? Because, not to be funny, but I don't have taxpayers in my pocket to pay my bills, so, you know, I don't know how to come up with the money, but... And then who's, I guess, my husband wanted to know who was doing the work, and is there some sort of warranty? some sort of warranty? And then my last question is, how come it was free last time and it's costing so much now?
What is your address?
419 Lake Street.
Are you on a corner?
No, I'm between Fourth and Fifth in the middle.
Okay. Are those all your questions?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I'm, Mr., I'm sorry, is Mr. Solberg, there he is. Maybe let Mr. Solberg come up, and he can try and answer most of those.
So this is the second mill and overlay for, typically, we will reconstruct a pavement, mill and overlay once, and then the pavement is shot, and we'll do a full reconstruction for it. The underlying pavement is in a, in a good condition, so we're doing a mill and overlay the second time instead of doing a full reconstruct. So it is, instead of, I think it's eighteen dollars a foot for a full reconstruct, it's a ten-dollar mill and overlay, so it is a less costly pavement treatment for this. But the first mill and overlay on an asphalt road is always free because it's considered a maintenance project. As far as alternate side parking, within the city, with the recent changes to our former policy with alternate side parking, if there is one side of the street that does not have parking, which would be the case with, with Lake Street, and then the other side does have parking, on certain days during the week, there would be no parking on either side of Lake Street. So that's common with the Third Ward and some of the routes in the Historic Randall Park. As far as the project being billed, we, the property owners have the option to pay the, the special assessments with one lump sum, and there would be no interest charged, or it will go on the property tax bills in ten equal installments, and then there will be simple interest charged on those payments. So the property owner will get a notice for the special assessments later this year, along with their property taxes noting that change. Once council takes action on the project, we send a copy of the final resolution out to the property owners who received notice of the public hearing tonight. So that will be the first notice that the property owners have, and once the project is bid and the council awards the bid, then our engineering technicians, who are inspectors for the city, will go and put door hangers on the properties along the route with as much notice as we have. But typically, it's less than a week's worth of notice that we have when the contractor is mobilizing in, but we do, soon as we find out, we put those door hangers out. And as far as warranty, when the city does have work that is done, it's not necessarily a warranty, like a five-year, hundred-thousand-mile warranty, but if something were to fail with the project, there are smaller warranties or expected lifespans in our special provisions. But then there is also a lifespan given in the special assessment policy, so if a concrete pavement or a curb and gutter fails prematurely and we have to repair it, the property owners do receive a credit for the use of the asset that they were previously special assessed for if they don't receive the full life for that. I think that's everything.
I think you got them all. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Are you okay? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Again, I'll ask if there's anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item, we'll give the North Conference Room just another few seconds to... Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is a public hearing on a resolution approving a site plan in P. Public District for bleacher and restroom renovations at the Carson Park Baseball Stadium located in Carson Park. We have Mr. Ivory.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The City of Eau Claire is proposing to replace the metal bleachers along the first and third baselines of the Carson Park Baseball Stadium. As part of the construction of the new bleachers, ADA accessible restrooms will be constructed underneath the back portion of the bleachers, and then in addition, new concession areas, dugouts, and storage areas will be provided. On the monitor here, it shows the aerial of the Carson Park Baseball Stadium with Carson Park Drive to the south, football stadium to the north, and then the parking lot to the west. This is a Google view of the stadium. I would like to have a drone picture of that, but we don't have a drone available, but this shows the two bleachers along the first base side and then the third base side. You can see that the bleachers are slightly larger along the third base side. The current bleachers were constructed back in 1964, and they were built to be portable, to be moved each year between the baseball stadium and the football stadium located to the north. The dugouts are not original either, they were built in the 1980s. The bleachers have long been a safety concern, as the area below the bench seats are open to the ground. In addition, the bleachers don't accommodate spectators having disabilities, nor offer them comparable viewing opportunities. Have a couple photos of the existing bleachers within the baseball stadium, the metal ones. Again, you can see how they're open down to the ground along, and they are just kind of bench-style seats, and this kind of shows a better picture of them being open to the The project, as I mentioned, consists of two bleacher structures, one along each baseline. Each structure will have a capacity of four-hundred-and-fifty-six box seats for spectators. This would be a similar seating capacity to what the existing bleachers have within the stadium. In addition, between the two bleachers combined, will provide a viewing area to accommodate thirty-eight wheelchairs. I think our staff report reflects that number, I think there's a, an attachment or insert within the, within the packet that indicates a little bit different number, but it would be thirty-eight wheelchairs that would be provided within both bleacher sections. In addition, the bike racks we provided in the vicinity of the stadium, based on the provisions of our zoning code, we'd be looking at about twenty-two bike parking spaces that we would provide, and those would be divided somewhat evenly between the south side and the west sides of the stadium. They'd also be available for other events in that area, for festivals, football games, people wanting to use the model train area, any of those types of things, those racks would be available. In addition, we anticipate there'd be about nine trees that would be removed as part of the project. This diagram here shows the location of those trees. There would be five that would be, have to be removed over on the, along the third base side, and then four along the first base side. This relates back to utility work that would be constructed, because we are going to be adding sewer and water to these two bleachers, and then also the bleacher construction themselves. The existing bleachers are a little bit more long, narrow in dimension, whereas the proposed bleachers are gonna be more like, you can see here, more kind of a square or a box type. So that change in dimension has the effect of having to remove some of those trees. We do plan to replace those nine trees with new trees or possibly some more. The, the sides and back of the bleachers will be enclosed with a rock face block that is a color and texture similar to the historic baseball stadium. This enclosure not only conceals the supporting structure of the bleachers, but also creates a space for some amenities below it. So this is a view of the bleachers looking towards the field. This would be from the field looking back up towards the bleachers, showing the dugout, and then also showing the seats themselves. The dugouts themselves will be a bit, a little bit larger than the existing listing dugouts to provide some more space for players and for equipment, which is a little bit in short supply with the existing dugouts. And this would be the backside of the, of the bleacher structure. The, and then this would be the floor, the floor plan that was originally presented, that would be underneath the bleachers. To the left-hand side, there's storage area, there is an area down in the far-left corner for apparel sales, and then as you move more, more over towards the right, there was, there's an area for mechanical, and then the, kind of the right corner is for the men's and women's restrooms, and then above that would be a concession area. We have made some minor modifications of that, that I'll talk about in just a minute The proposed project does not involve any changes to the historic portion of the stadium that was built in 1936. The historic portion of the stadium was placed on the National Register in 2003, and then locally designated in 2004. Since the proposed renovations are in proximity in part of the stadium, we did present these to the Wisconsin Historical Society, and upon their review, they, they approved the project, and we have documentation in our file of that approval. Terms of the review process locally here, the site plan was presented to the Landmarks Commission, and they recommended approval. They did note that the, that the city should eventually paint the green trim on the baseball stadium to match the green trim on the bleachers. It shows here the trim on the, on the new bleachers will be kind of a narc, a dark green, whereas the trim on the baseball stadium right now is kind of faded, more of a faded green or almost a pale blue. So they want to tie that connection between the two. They also indicated that the, the rock face block, they felt positive about that, they felt it was a good fit for the design with the block face that would resemble the stone on the stadium in color and texture, but not replicate the exterior of the stadium. One of the principles in historic preservation is when you're building a new structure, not replicate it identically, but to try to carry over some of the design features between the two, and we feel that we're doing that. Also, the colored trim, the railings and the fencing between the stadium and the bleachers will tie the two together also. The site plan was also reviewed by the Water Vision Parks Commission, and they recommended approval. They recommended consideration of adding a gender-neutral restroom to one of the bleachers. Air's associates then reviewed the plans and have developed an option that would incorporate a gender-neutral restroom in one of the bleachers, and this would add a cost of about thirty thousand dollars for that restroom. So what we'd be doing there is changing the area that was part of a mechanical and IT room, reducing the size of the mechanical area, moving the IT room, IT room up to the upper left-hand corner, and then providing the space listed there as a family toilet room that would be listed as a gender-neutral restroom. Then finally, the planning commission reviewed the project, and they recommended approval with the addition of the gender-neutral restroom in one of the bleacher structures with signage that would be consistent with the signage that we'll be putting on the, the new restroom building over at Owen Park. With that, I think Jeff Pipinger is here to provide maybe just a little bit more detail, a little more background on the design.
Thank you, Mr. Ivory. Good evening, Mr. Pipinger.
Good evening. Pat did a great job here, so I really don't have many additions here, but I just talk a little bit about the customer experience itself. The stadium, basically, right now with the bleachers, it's got bench seats. These will go to stadium seats, plastic seats, which will give back support. We did give up about a hundred seats from what we have existing now to this, but we believe this is going to be a much better customer experience. And then also, we, we had the deficiency of having ADA-compliant restroom and also the viewing areas, and we've addressed all those deficiencies we have at the stadium. So our hope is, moving forward, that this becomes a benefit not only now, but for future generations that use this park. Tonight, we have several people from the committee that has been fundraising for the project. They're here tonight to hopefully talk to it a little bit, and certainly, our hope is that we'll, we'll reach that goal sometime in the near future, so we can, we can construct this out. So with that, be happy to answer, any questions?
Questions from council? Council Vice President Emmanuel.
Thank you, Council President Weld. Thank you, Mr. Pipinger and Mr. Ivory. Exciting to see this happen. Pretty soon, we get to say, take me out to the ballgame, to the new place to sit. Help me understand a little bit about any potential covering for the bleacher seats, and, and is there anything planned?
Are you talking about the grandstand or the, the bleachers here?
These bleachers, yeah.
Okay, so you can see this a little bit, but there is a netting that will be going across that area that will cover that, that area for foul balls. And typically, that's where baseball's going anyways, you're seeing in major league parks, that they're actually putting more netting up to protect the fans from hard foul balls, especially when you've got pitchers that are throwing in the ninety-plus, and when that ball comes off that bat, you don't have time to react. So that, that is something that you can see a little bit there, but there will be an extension out to pass the, pass that, into that dugout area.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember McGregor.
Yeah, thank you, President Weld. Thank you, Mr. Pipinger. The, I guess the question from Vice President Emmanuel made me think about, I guess, another type of covering, and that's, you know, any sort of shelter. Is it being designed in such a way that that could be added in the future, or is it really not the plan in the long run to have any sort of rooftop over it?
Yeah, that's a good question. We explored that. It was cost-prohibitive right now, but with this type of bleacher system, it's something that can be done. In fact, we looked at some early on in the design phase that they have that, but it's costly, and we're on a budget, and we're trying to stay on the budget. But yes, these can be retrofitted to, to something like that.
Any other questions? I don't see any. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Good evening.
Good evening. Mark Fawness, 3527 Leslie Lane, lifelong Eau Claire resident, and not the first time I spoke to you on this topic. And I should also add, the quote-unquote chairman of the Capitol Campaign Committee at this point in time. You know, the, this project, and I'm also the coach and general manager and chief cook and bottle washer for our American Legion baseball program in this town, but this project is really not about my players and the play on the field. And, you know, I was fortunate enough a couple of weeks ago to hear City Manager Dale and, and President Terry Weld's presentation at the State of the City, which was excellent, by the way, regarding, you know, quality of life issues, and this is one of those. It's another one of those things that, another amenity for our community, helps us with our, our workforce issues, just another asset, and long overdue. I think my first trip to Carson Park was probably in early 1960s, when my father was playing, and I'm pretty sure them bleachers were there then. So we have, we have roughly a hundred and fifty events currently that take place in the baseball stadium. With the addition presumably of UW Eau Claire baseball also playing there will add on to that number, so there is a need with a lot of those events taking place in the spring. And, you know, quite frankly, the, the, the grand old stadium isn't really available in the spring because it doesn't thaw out until about mid-May, so we have those lovely portable toilets and no concessions up there. So, you know, with more events earlier in the spring, the amenities that go along with the bleacher system are, are very much needed. So I just ask for your support, and, you know, things are working well so far.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Fawness. Any questions from council members? I don't see any. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Andy Naborak, addresses 1618 Sunrise Lane in Eau Claire. I'm with Mark on the committee to help fundraise for this project, and would just like to take a couple of minutes to speak on it and its value to the community. As everyone has kind of stated, you know, it's really gonna help the spring users up there because the stadium will be able to function at full capacity right away with restrooms... restrooms and better seating and just a better fan experience. I think that will stretch with every team that plays up there and every fan that comes up there for any reason. It will just provide a lot more comfortable of an atmosphere. One of the pictures I had to chuckle was the circus, and that's up there for two days every year, and from someone that's had to work in concessions up there for that, there's a ton of people that come up there even for that event. So even for something like that, this new facility will help accommodate that crowd and some of the larger crowds that are up there. I wanted to speak a little bit on this section and the roof, just from a different perspective of talking with thousands of fans over the years. There are many that would prefer to not have a roof over their head, so I think that this really complements the grandstand that's up there, because if someone wants to have a roof over their head, that ability is there for them. There are a lot of people that would love to sit outside and would prefer to not have a seat with a roof over them and have the sun on them, so I think that option is very useful as a function for this ballpark as well. The last point I wanted to make on this project is just, it's important to the community. You know, as a lot of us know, there's going to be workforce shortages coming up here in coming years, and this community has done a great job of really supporting various efforts to try to attract new people to this area through support of the arts, music, downtown, and all those types of things. You know, there's another segment with our sports community and our local sports that I think is very important to be a draw to the Chippewa Valley, and I think that this project is really going to help that for some of those sports fans to maybe want to relocate to this area, whether it's to watch their kids play at Carson Park in high school games, or to attend a Legion Cavs or an Express game during the summer. So I think it's an important quality-of-life piece for the Chippewa Valley to help keep us move forward.
Any questions from council? Thanks for coming up. Appreciate it. Anyone else that wishes to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. Sue Bornick from the Eau Claire Community Foundation. And the Eau Claire Community Foundation, we are very proud to hold the Carson Park Stadium Renovation Fund that we really feel will make a difference for our community for years to come. Our Board of Trustees believes that together with our community, we're making it possible for even more people to enjoy this great American pastime, and not only that, in our all-American city, and we don't want to forget about that. The Carson Park Stadium has been a crown jewel in Eau Claire, and it's one of the most beloved parks since nineteen sixty-three. It's home to high school graduations, concerts, festivals, the annual fireworks. The Carson Park Stadium enjoys the distinct distinction of being the Wisconsin National Registry's historic places. I mean, that's a nonprofit. That's wonderful, but it is most known for Eau Claire for baseball. The community is fortunate to have the dedicated group that's fundraising right now for this project. They are meeting every other week. They are constantly finding out ways to make different ways to bring in the dollars, grants, whatever way that they can make this work. They're dedicated to making this goal. The group is working diligently for the final push. You'll see some new pieces to come, and just including the upgrades of the seats to stadium, to the improvement of the restrooms, and the piece that goes with ADA for our fans that have disabilities, that's incredible, and we really appreciate that. On behalf of the Eau Claire Community Foundation's Board of Trustees, thank you, the City of Eau Claire, for the efforts you are making to make this renovation possible. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Thanks for coming up. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Good evening.
Good evening. Mark Troyce, thirty-one thirteen Sharon Drive. Ten years ago, we moved to this area, and we never heard about Carson Park until we came here. And at that time, I had a small son, and we've enjoyed baseball and watching baseball in the community, and one of the things that we did were to go to the child's area and play in the child's area with my son and whatnot. And I didn't see anything in the plans that included any kind of kid zone. I realize that the park is just, you know, a quarter mile up the street, but there's a lot of families that go there with their kids, and within the drawings, I think that that would be very appropriate to have, some kind of kid zone within the ballpark so the family experience can be really enjoyed. So, thank you very much.
Any questions from council? Thanks for coming up. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Good evening.
Good evening. Donald Sherman, three-two-one five Seymour Road. And I want to thank the Eau Claire Community Foundation for its effort to do some fundraising towards renovation. I especially would look forward to eventually be done as far as adding solid flooring for the bleachers area. I do believe for simple, like myself, and some people with small children may have a safety issue with that, as well as for all fans who have any valuables. There's an increased risk, I believe, for valuables to fall down to the ground below the bleachers, and they can easily be taken by human thieves before the fans have any chance to realize what's going on, and maybe try to go out there and retrieve the valuable if it's still there, and then risk comes to pay for readmission before they can enjoy any more of the game. So as the news says, I look forward to being resolved, and I especially look forward to the renovations being completed, hopefully in a year or two, depending on what the plans are. And so I believe it'd be a great project to undergo as well, so other factors involved. Any questions?
Any questions from council? Appreciate you coming up.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Can I ask, is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number four, which is a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning a property located at thirty-eight oh-one Gateway Drive from TC three to C three P and to adopt a general development plan with a site plan for commercial building. This item was postponed, actually, from Plan Commission, and generally, what follows that is council will usually postpone as well. We do have staff members here. If there's questions from the community, and if there's anyone that came this evening to speak to this item specifically, you're still welcome to speak this evening. Otherwise, it will be, there will be another public hearing in two weeks for this agenda item. So I guess, first of all, from council, Mr. Petrie I know is here. If there's any questions for Mr. Petrie from council? No? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item this evening? Seeing none, we will close that item and move on to our public discussion, which is agenda item number five, a public discussion on a resolution condemning deportation of Hmong and Lao ethnic minorities and the separation of families in the Chippewa Valley. This is an item that has been brought forward by Councilmember Law and Councilmember Worthman, and I would open the floor to Councilmember Law if you wish to speak to this agenda item.
Thank you, President Weld. Thank you for coming tonight, and I'm proud to be a Hmong and to be serve my public service in Eau Claire. I wanted to introduce this Hmong and Lao refugee deportations resolution to our city council meeting tonight, and like the communities as a whole, and to help stop the Trump administration from deporting individual Hmong and Lao to the Lao Democrat Party. Eau Claire has a long tradition of welcoming immigrants and refugees. I'm proud that many Hmong and Lao immigrants call Eau Claire as their homes, and the only home they know. As you all know, thousand Hmong and Lao refugees fled to the US in the nineteen seventy, including many fought bravely alongside with the US during the Vietnam War. It is about sixty-one thousand two hundred eighty-seven Hmong, Lao, Vietnamese, Cambodia family living, and other minority group currently live in Wisconsin. This policy that the Trump administration's working on to deport Hmong family back to Laos is not acceptable to Hmong families. It's a hardship for us, the country that we freed forty years ago, and that a lot of young Hmong people who are, will be deported back to Laos, who are never live in Laos. I'm proud to be representing the city of Eau Claire and the Hmong communities. The Eau Claire population is about eighty thousand people living here, but Hmong is the second-largest group in this community, and remarkable that contribution of Hmong and Lao neighbors keeping our community strong and successfully. Our Hmong and Lao communities, remember, have long make vital contribution to economic and culture in these communities. Hmong and Lao are your neighbors, your colleagues, your friends, and I'm proud to stand with them. Many Hmong and Lao families arrived as refugees and settled in Wisconsin, Minnesota, California, and other states across the country. Hmong family have been helped fighting the war back in my homeland country as Laos. Thirty thousand Hmong people who are died during the war. Hmong have recruited by the CIA at a very young age. All you can see that Hmong family has recruiting by age fifteen or younger to be fighting the war. And now it's time for us, as communities, to support our Hmong families, Hmong and Lao families in these communities across the country, and to send a message to the higher-level ranking government, say that this deportation is not acceptable to our Hmong families who are struggling, helping fighting the war, and including myself and my families, who have been tore apart the first time. Some today that my family still back in Laos, and my family's some live in America. And I don't want that to happen again this time, that had to be tore apart again second time. Life for as a refugee who came to America struggling, and I want all the community and the leaders, my city council colleagues, to support the resolutions that we can say that Eau Claire is lovable, livable community that accept immigrant and refugee, and we are the community that represent the first Hmong city council in the United States, that Joe B. Shong is the first Hmong city council. I want you all to help send this message to our politician that it's not acceptable to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Law. Does council have any questions from Mr. Law? Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President Weld, and thank you, Councilmember Law, for bringing this resolution forward this evening. Just wanted to say a few words, and I think, first of all, to recognize the courage of Councilmember Law and the courage of our Hmong community fighting alongside the United States. The courage to, in Councilmember Law's case, his family had to hide in the jungle for fifteen years on the run. The courage to come to a country where you don't know the language, where you may not have the skills to get a job right away. The courage, in Councilmember Law's case, to learn the language, to go to the Eau Claire Public Library at night, to want to be a part of our community, to want to add to what it is to be American. And this resolution that we're going to be voting on tomorrow night and hearing from many of you this evening, says that it is not okay to tear people, to tear family members away from Eau Claire, away from families in Minneapolis, in Chicago, in Tulsa, in Fresno, and every other place that Hmong community members have made their home. It is not okay. It does nothing positive. It only hurts. And so I just want to thank Councilmember John Law, you for your leadership on this, and read the whereas, sorry, the be it therefore resolved clause that defines this resolution before I yield, and that is that the City Council of Eau Claire asserts that all refugees and immigrants should be treated with dignity, care, and respect, and specifically condemns the deportation and repatriation of Hmong and Lao from their American communities here, Eau Claire, and across the United States, which separates and traumatizes families and needlessly severs established productive employment and community relationships, and that we, as a city council, urge our federal government to reject any and all proposals that would result in a deportation of our Hmong and Lao community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Worthman. Any questions again from council? Seeing none, again, this is a public discussion, and anyone that wishes to come up and speak is welcome. Introduce yourself with your name and your address. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lee Hennig. I live at three-one-five-zero Runway Avenue. I'm a veteran, and I come here to support my Hmong brothers and sisters. I personally admire you, John, for a number of reasons, for your struggle and everything else. We have a debt of honor to our Hmong brethren. They went way behind enemy lines into North Vietnam, rescuing our downed pilots. They fought for us, and our CIA recruited them. They fought for us, neutralized a Patton-Lao in Laos, sucked in twelve NVA divisions into Laos, neutralized them, and kept those twelve divisions out of South Vietnam. There are thousands of Americans alive today because of the Hmong. They were, after the war, we basically abandoned them as a country, and they suffered years of degradation and traumatizing their families, their whole lives are disrupted. This is a debt of honor. This is a debt of honor that the United States owes Hmong. And furthermore, our present administration is to, desire to traumatize Hmong even further, tells me that whatever happens to one of us can happen to all of us. Where does it stop? We have a chance to send a message and stand up for our brothers and sisters, and I, for one, am going to say everything and do everything I can to help the Hmong, to help my brothers and sisters here in town, and watch out. Shinji Doa.
Thank you, Mr. Hennig.
Any questions?
Any questions from council? Thank you for coming up. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Otto. This is my son, Grant Otto. We live at twenty-two-twenty Lynn Avenue, Altoona. However, we attended the rally tonight. One of his good friends is Hmong, and he wished to address the council. We do own property in the city of Eau Claire, so requesting permission for him to speak.
Certainly.
I want the Hmong people to stay here because as one of them is my friend, and if you take away Hmong people and not let them into our country, you're not letting friendships get back to get better, and more kids won't like that. that. And they can't go to their houses and have fun there, here, and, and the Hmong people can't, can't go, go to their houses and have fun there. So I think that the Hmong people should stay here.
Okay, good job. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for the Ottos?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mike Fisher, one sixteen West Grant Avenue. I enlisted in Marine Corps in nineteen sixty-six, from a pretty vanilla, white suburb of Minneapolis. I had the opportunity to know people of color, uh, from several different things, but being in the service in those years, I'm sure Lee would say the same thing, was fairly integrated thanks to Truman in nineteen forty-eight. And when I moved here, I, I left Minnesota, moved to Wisconsin in nineteen seventy-eight. I moved to Eau Claire in eighty-one. This is a pretty vanilla place, too. And, uh, I was here to watch the Hmong people move in. My wife and children attended Trinity Lutheran when the first Hmong were brought in through that church, I believe. And, uh, to, to observe the difficulty after the trauma that they had to survive in the jungles and from the war, and how we abandoned them after the war, and the many years it took just to get their opportunity to come to this country, to, with the promises of the American dream, however able that is to be fulfilled for anybody. But then the trauma of being in this place that was all white, pretty much, and adapt, and the courage it took to learn the language and to try to attain decent employment. I never did create very many friendships with Hmong, but I've, I've observed them, I've admired them. The ones that I did have an opportunity to work close with were hardworking. They were humble, they didn't know how to react. There was so much anti-Hmong attitude at first that they had to overcome as well. Now we're into like the third generation. Everything I've ever read about any immigrant movement into the country, it takes three generations to really be, start to become integral to the community. We're there. This is the time. The threat to deport or denaturalize American citizens or green card holders after forty years is just pure terrorism. We cannot support that as a community. We have to condemn this. We have to make a statement as United States citizens and as community members of Eau Claire in support. Mr. Lohr, the resolution, Mr. Worthman. And that's my statement to this. On a side note, that has nothing to do with this, I apologize. As the treasurer of the Triple Valley Blues Society, I wanted to thank you all for making our function stay in Owen Park throughout the entire season, so thank you very much.
Any questions from council? Thanks for coming up. Appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Kim Kronk, and I live at one zero one nine Hipsh Boulevard here in Eau Claire, and I've been here before. I always come here as a mother, a grandmother, a sister, an aunt, a daughter, a cousin, a neighbor, and a community member. And I come here tonight in full support of the anti-deportation resolution. I wanna thank those tonight at the rally who spoke and those who didn't, and for all the people who showed their support and will continue to show their support of our neighbors, our family, our friends, and our community members. Eau Claire County is having a series of listening sessions and public engagement strategic planning sessions, one of those which was this evening. I didn't feel torn about where I needed to be, and I'm happy to see many other county board members here for this very important listening session and show of solidarity. It is critical we show up, invite others, and in the words of Mai Jong earlier tonight, keep this momentum going. I want to invite everyone who showed up tonight and for you to tell everyone you know to come to the additional listening sessions for the county happening tomorrow, um, tomorrow morning at nine AM, at RCU in the Eau Claire River Room here in Eau Claire, at one PM tomorrow at the Town of Washington Meeting Room, and at five PM tomorrow at the CVTC Business Education Center, room BEC thirty, AB, right here in Eau Claire. Uh, this info is on the Eau Claire County website, and if you cannot attend, you can also fill out the Eau Claire County Civic Engagement Comment Card online. If you're not able to do that, um, you can call administration, ask for an interpreter, request assistance, or call one of your local county board representatives. We will assist you and take that information, and I think this issue is critical. So I hope people show up and also engage the county as well as the city because it's all part of our community. I am a representative of, of the Eau Claire County Board and serve, um, at many tables, one of them being Human Services. I'm proud and I believe in the work to preserve and strengthen family connections always. I do not believe that is a motto or a mission or a goal that should end at the doors of Human Services, but in all of our services, our community work, our policies, our ordinances, our codes, and how many of us are coming together to do this critical work to humanize one another. This should not be for some families, certain families, while screening others out or excluding others, but it is for all families. It is up to each and every one of us to call this what it is. It's a racist policy, and each of us has to not just abhor racist policies, codes, ordinances, or laws, but ensure that we work in solidarity to call it what it is, dismantle them, and replace them with anti-racist policies. There is no in-between. What affects one of us affects all of us, and if we can do that, actually, when we do that, we will assuredly be creating policies that also work to preserve and strengthen family connections always. I wanna thank Councilmember Lohr deeply, um, for writing this resolution and Councilmember Worthman for seconding it. I wanna thank everybody that came and spoke tonight, and again, please come, continue to engage. We need to stick with each other, we need to work in solidarity to dismantle all racist policies and create policies that are anti-racist. I appreciate this, um, and I hope that the county also follows suit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Thanks for coming up.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Teresa Nagel, six forty Wisconsin Street in Eau Claire. I just wanted to add a few comments to the very many good things that have already been said. I've so often heard this administration in Washington talk about promises made, promises kept. Well, where is the keeping of this promise? That we promised that we would bring our allies to this country, and as the veterans spoke much better than I can about it. I can only imagine how many generations there are of American citizens who came before, who would not be here at all if it was not for the help of our Hmong, uh, brothers and sisters in arms. We made a promise, that promise is still needing to be kept to the fullest. How many of us who came here played, uh, paid this kind of price that our Hmong neighbors paid? They paid in blood, they paid in tears, they paid in loyalty and service to our troops. The generations that have followed them have done nothing but honor our community. Good people, good friends, neighbors, businessmen and women, honorable people. When I heard what was going on with this attempt to repatriate the Hmong, I was just horrified, and I, I still can't believe it, but I know it's true. There's no honor in abandoning your allies, there never has been. We already carry the shame of doing it once. Let us not do it again. I've heard one of the reasons is that, uh, of the people who are considered for deportation is that they were unable to become citizens, and that one of the causes might be some minor infraction of the law or other barrier to citizenship. Most people have repaid, uh, for any wrongdoing that might have been done, and that is certainly a minority of this population that we're talking about. Time and again, it's proven and written about that immigrants commit far fewer crimes in general than the general population because they're so concerned to want to be good citizens and to make a home here. So if some of the members have, uh, under the terrible stress of years of war, hiding in the jungle for fifteen years just to survive, have made mistakes, then the appropriate response is an effort to remove the barriers that exist now to their citizenship so they can be fully embraced. Our debt is not paid. Our debt will never be fully paid until every Laos and every Hmong person in the United States and in this community is fully embraced and welcomed and protected from any fear now or incoming generations of deportation.
Thank you. Any questions?
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay. Thanks for coming up. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Zong Cha He, or some, uh, most people call me Dr. He, so I'm very proud to be here, um, tonight, especially be in front of the city council, so, um, I still feel nervous, but I do my best anyway. Okay, um, my family, we have been living Eau Claire more than three decade now, and we are so proud, uh, to be in the Triple Valley, to be a good citizen, yeah? You know, so, um, I would like to, uh, just, um, say something, and I'm so proud to be in the United States, and I'd like to thank you very much for the United States government, and especially for this, uh, citizen that they're welcoming, the Hmong people, and also the Laotian people into the United States. And, uh, we are coming here, um, you know, um, we have no choice, but this is the, our home, uh, this is the safe play for everybody to come in here. After leaving here peacefully for more than forty years, and, um, you know, I, I heard a lot of thing going on at the, um, on the White House, you know, talk about Trump administration regarding the deportation, it just make me heart ache, you know? It's very painful, uh, especially I'm a pastor too, so I have a lot of people, especially I also are helping the veterans, so I'm currently the president for the veteran in Eau Claire here too. So, um, I'm here tonight to just, you know, um, ask and please and also urge, uh, the city council to pass or to, uh, you know, pass the reservation that, uh, council law present. And a lot of the, um, veterans, uh, they have been calling me, you know, and asking me, say, we haven't peace since we've been in the United States. Because of when we live in Laos, we never have a peace. We just go around killing, and you only hear all, you know, the fighting all the time, and there is no peace over there. So since we came to the United States, yeah, more than forty years now, we have very, very peaceful. And, um, the United States, especially Eau Claire, is our home for more than forty years. And after we, we, we hear, uh, saying that, uh, you know, some of the family member have to be deported, that may, especially the veterans, they feel so sad, they don't know what to do. And mostly, I would say eighty percent of the veterans is already passed away. So right now, we only have about twenty percent who's still living today. So I would like to urge especially the city council member to pay, pass the reservation, and I would like you to support, and, um, I so appreciate it, that's why I'm, I'm here tonight, on behalf of the veterans and also of the, uh, Hmong refugee and Laotian refugee. So thank you so much for your time and allowing me to be here too.
Thank you, Dr. He. Any questions from council?
Any question?
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks again. Good evening, Mr. Zine.
Dave Zine, seventeen sixteen sixty-third Street, Eau Claire. I'm gonna, I have a handout if it's appropriate, Mr. President and members, if you could pass this around. It's somewhat of a history of the Vietnam War, some of my experiences with the Hmong over the years. Ten thousand plus Americans, Koreans, South Koreans, English, Canadians, and Australians owe their lives because the Hmong harassed the Ho Chi Minh Trail because they did their guerrilla operations, because they protected that radar station in northwestern Laos, which we did not find out until, what, a decade after the Vietnam War, that B-52s could not have flown in all of Southeast Asia. This handout goes through a lot of things, a lot of activities at Kadat, the only place in the world that we know of that flies the old Laotian flag. And, Mr. President and members, I'm gonna give you one of these, and I know you'll know what to do with it, perhaps the authors of the resolution will do it, whatever, but bottom line is, at Kadat, we, we did it. It's, uh, we were one of the absolute first organizations to put up a monument stone for the Hmong people, and we're looking, and when you read some of this, we're looking to do something at the roadside ice cream and diner in Menominee Street, there are already two signs there. We'd like to, there's some extra copies here. Ralph, can you pass those around, some of the members of the audience that might want some of my handouts? But we're gonna put up something there that honors the Hmong, comparable to what you have in this handout, and it would be, I need constructive feedback, you can tell me what we can do different. And, um, uh, something else that's coming up, March twenty-first, we have Vietnam Veterans Day at the Eagles Club in Hallie, Village Hallie. If you wanna see something, one of the absolute most respectful color guards that there is in this area is the Hmong. The largest audience we ever had, the largest color guard at the Wisconsin Veterans Tribute in Kadat, Wisconsin, Wisconsin Veterans Tribute Citizen Soldier Monument was the Hmong. I mean, they're a proud people, and as far as this resolution, and you will read some of my comments, if we have criminals, druggies, if we have gang members, they deserve to be punished, but this is a little bit different. Allies in the Vietnam War, you talk to a lot of Vietnam veterans, a lot of Vietnam veterans don't even know what the Hmong did, even to this very day. They deserve a little bit of extra consideration, the families, they don't deserve to suffer. Because I know, if you wanna see a DVD, I, I dare you to see it. Hunted like animals. You will not believe what you'll see. What they did to the Hmong, that's why they were forced genocide, that's why they came to this country, when you read that, and I'm afraid it's gonna happen again. And I don't trust the communists, I don't trust that whole area, and I, I just got a one last thing. One of the rare people in this region, I was in Laos. I served there. I did not find out until, um, thirteen years after. Our company commander said, you know, you were in Laos, we weren't supposed to tell you. I was point man, I found a huge base camp. When I was point man, I didn't take the trails, I blazed my own trail. I come across a huge base camp, when we blew that up, when we detonated it, it was unbelievably, the whole mountain blew up. French nitroglycerin was stored there, we didn't even know how much. Bottom line, I was in Laos. I never saw any civilians in Laos. I mean, we were in the jungles. You ain't never seen a more beautiful country, over every ridge, different vegetation, different animals, it was beautiful, triple canopy jungle. It was unbelievable. I'd like to go to Laos, but I don't want, I don't wanna live there. So God bless you in this resolution, it's very important, thank you. I mean, and all these facts that I bring up here, I want you to use them, and if there's constructive feedback, if I got some of my facts and figures wrong, I need the feedback. God bless you. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Thank you.
Semper Fi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mine, I live on thirty-one oh five Sherman Street.
on behalf of the community. As you all may know, Eau Claire is the 20th, ranks 20th largest in Hmong population, and Wisconsin ranks second or third in the whole country. So it's home to a lot of people. And so it is just heartening to learn that our current administration, the representation of our country, the United States of America, has proposed to deport one of its biggest allies, the Hmong people. This proposal is a betrayal of allyship and a broken promise to our community. During the period of 1963 to 1975, of the 300,000 Hmong people living in Laos, more than 40,000 Hmong soldiers, the average age of 15 years old or younger were recruited into the CIA-sponsored secret operations known as the Special Guerrilla Unit, the SGU, to fight America's war. As the war escalated, Hmong girls were trained as nurses and medics to care for the wounded soldiers. By the time the war ended, between 30,000 to 40,000 Hmong soldiers had been killed in combat, and another 2,500 to 3,000 were missing in action. Many of the Hmong who were unsuccessful at fleeing Laos and are stuck there today is still facing persecution on a daily. Many of them are still in the mountains, they can't come back to civilian. Those who may be facing deportation, a lot of them were not born in Laos, they were born in the refugee camps in Thailand. Laos was not their home country. Many of whom are also now active citizens in our community, and they are breadwinners for their families. Even though this proposal may be, made proposal by the current administration is set to dividing families and used to separate us as people, as the people, and abandoning our allies, I believe and am hopeful that our local communities, neighbors, state and local officials, withstand and solidarity with our Hmong brothers and sisters. Since the displacement and resettlement of the Hmong people into America, we've been one of the fastest community to assimilate to American society and contribute to all sectors of our community economic success. Locally here in Eau Claire, we have a wonderful pool of Hmong professors, professionals, who are doctors, nurses, engineers, laborers, educators, business owners, and more. All these individuals and the business owners, all these business, I'm sorry, all these individuals in the Hmong community, along with Eau Claire's diversity feeds into the success of Eau Claire and its economic success. A growing number of studies suggest that geographic proximity and cultural diversity of places openness to different cultures, religions, sexual orientations play key roles in economic growth. I believe that Eau Claire could lead the way and lead by example by creating a place where everyone matters, celebrating and bridging our diversity, and by living Eau Claire's strategic plans of keeping an engaged community. When families are separated, it creates trauma and disengagement. Quality of life and economic development is also a part of these cities' strategic plan. When you remove sole providers of a family, it disrupts the quality of life and the ability to afford a living. It plays a downfall in our affordable housing plans. It sets us as a community back. It puts people and families in poverty. Change starts with leaders of our community and leaders of our city. With everyone here, I ask for your support of this resolution to protect the safety of our community and our neighbors so that they too can have a quality of life that we strive as Eau Claire's citizens to have. You can lead by starting supporting this resolution and not just by passing a resolution, but by holding accountability and moving forward to supporting your community. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Tru Vu and I live on 1614 Chumas Drive. I was born in a refugee camp. I'm sorry, this story, you would think that the Vietnam War was affecting my parents, but it also affected me. Instead of being born in a house, I was born in a small, small room with 10 other people in there. And I came to the United States. My parents wanted to make sure that we had a better life, knowing that they were hunting down, that's why they came here to the United States. And my parents drilled my sisters and my brother and I to make sure that we got a good education and that we became good citizens. I was very fortunate, God laid out a road of positiveness where I had teachers. And I graduated from Eau Claire, the high school, and also the UW Eau Claire as well. So I am a product of the city. And I'm very fortunate to have teachers, friends, family that loved and support me, so my life flourished. But not everyone had a positive life like mine. And some of them turned to gangs. And I grew up watching some of my friends that were really smart, and I was really jealous of them, turn to gangs and turn their life upside down. And now, they've changed. Some of them are not citizens, and I worry for them. And I thought to myself, just like Mai said, I was not born in Laos, I was born in a refugee camp, and so I was child of war. So Thailand, I can't go to Thailand either if anything happened to me. And I thought to myself, what if I turned to a gang? And what if I did something bad? And now I turn my life around, but I am also a mother now? And if anything was to happen to me, I would have to leave my one-year-old child and go live somewhere else and have that child be motherless. And I thought to myself, we can't do that to these families. So I ask you to please support this resolution, do not split these families up. I was able to go to Laos in 2005, and I went to visit some of my families I've only heard stories of. And when I was able to hold them and hug them and laugh with them and figure out that they are just as silly as my family here in the United States, I was so sad at the same time because I grew up not even knowing them. Please, support us in this resolution, do not split the families up. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks for coming up.
My name is Zoe Roberts, I live at 2710 Simona Parkway. We're all here today because of the Trump administration's efforts to expand its deportation program to the Hmong community. A community that came to the United States as refugees seeking safety from an oppressive and genocidal regime post-Vietnam War. A war, by the way, where they fought shoulder to shoulder with American soldiers. Deporting these folks would destroy families, communities, and friendships, and so much more. We're all raised to know right from wrong. Is this right? Doesn't feel like it, sure feels like it's wrong. So I know where I'm gonna stand, I'm gonna stand right here with my friends and my neighbors in the Hmong community. We're all human beings, we all deserve dignity, we all have rights, and now we have to come together to protect one another from the growing cruelty of an increasingly dangerous and hostile federal government. The country I grew up in believed in aiding refugees, in lending a helping hand when people were down and needed it. What has become of us? Where did we go? Where do we let those values go? It just feels wrong. Why are we now letting our hearts and minds get filled with hatred and fear? I stand here ashamed, I know deep down, Americans are better people than this. I know that we can and must do better. And I know that it seems like we've all forgotten that virtually all of us are immigrants or descendants thereof. In closing, I just wanna say that I find the Trump administration's actions abhorrent. They're without morals, they're without ethics, and they are without basic human decency. I ask that the city council approve this resolution and protect its Hmong constituency. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks for coming up.
Yep. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jeff Smith. I, born and raised in the city of Eau Claire, very proud of the city of Eau Claire. I represent the city of Eau Claire now in the state senate. But I, and I'm very proud of the fact that the city of Eau Claire, though it was mentioned earlier tonight, that Lily White, as I grew up here, but so proud of the city of Eau Claire for opening its arms and embracing the Hmong population that came into this country and saying, "Eau Claire was open for that." Eau Claire is also, has the, should be bragging about the fact that we were the first community who seeded someone at this, in this council, from the Hmong community in the United States. And Joel B. Zhang, who was that person, I was very fortunate to become friends with. And Joel B. invited myself and Dave Dux, as you recall, also on the council, back in 2004 to a party, to an event. And the thing that, and it was, it's one of those events, one of those moments that changes your life, that sticks with you for the rest of your life, because when I walked into that facility, and I think Dave and I were the only white people in the room. And you never forget that, that this was my moment that, and I've had several since then, but this was my first moment when I felt like, oh, I'm in the minority. This is what it's like to be in the minority. But better than that, it reminded me of my past, where I came from. My grandparents on my mother's side were Polish. I don't ever remember my grandparents speaking English. I never understood my grandparents, they probably never would have understood me either, but it was, it was just, it always has stuck with me as the fact that we all came from somewhere. We're all now American, but tonight, we're all Hmong. Tonight, we are all Hmong, John. And this is where we belong, this is why we're here, because we are the great American melting pot, and we all came from somewhere, we cannot forget that. We're all together. Thank you for bringing this to the city of Eau Claire, John. Thank you for being here. You have enriched our community, you have made Eau Claire a better place, something for us all to be proud of, and we need to carry that forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Stephanie Hoeksmann, I live at 416 Sixth Avenue. I would like to start by just taking, all of us taking a second to acknowledge that the land that we live and work and occupy once belonged to the Ojibwa, Ho'ang, and Dakota nations, and just acknowledge that this land was sacred to them, and borders are arbitrary. So now, while this specific piece of legislation is novel in front of our eyes today, the rhetoric and oppression that has nurtured its very existence are all too familiar for individuals in our community. It's critical for us to remember that the very nature of immigration and deportation places the enforcement of such policies beyond the scope of those charged with it. It's putting you all in charge of it right now, and it's putting all of us in charge here in order to stand solidarity. It forces narratives of racism and xenophobia into our community. As a child of an immigrant and a student leader at UW Eau Claire, I just wanna remind all of you that this country was founded and created by immigrants. Immigrants have built and continue to maintain this economy and this very community. Immigration policy affects all of our citizens, and I'm honestly just not at all comfortable supporting the perpetuation that our Hmong, Lao, Mexican, and other minoritized communities are anything but a beautiful contribution to our community. And with that, I just wanna end by saying that no human being is illegal. And thank you so much to the authors of this piece of legislation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Cha Taldegro, South 8651 Appar Road in Eau Claire. I am a son of a refugee family. My grandma brought my mom here and three other siblings to the United States in 1995. My grandparents escaped prosecution by crossing the Mekong River. Many of her families and friends did not make it across, having drowned or killed on their way to the river. I'm thankful for the sacrifice because if they haven't, I wouldn't be here today. Children of refugee immigrants deserve to grow up with their families and to live with all fear of other, of their loved ones being deported. I'm making, I'm asking council members to support and pass the anti-deportation resolution because families belong together. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. Good evening.
Hi. I'm Laurie Newberry, 2003 Altoona Avenue, apartment 10. I'm just here for kind of a little personal thing. I used to be, well, I still am, a literacy volunteer, and I helped several women become more fluent in English. And one of my ladies got her citizenship, studying hard, harder than I would have studied. You know, I didn't know as much as she was learning to get her citizenship. And I was invited to a baby's day, I was the only Caucasian there. I was so honored and blessed. And when I heard what our national administration is going to be doing, I do tend to have a little temper, and I sort of blew up because I have worked in the Latino part two here in Eau Claire. And what is wrong with our government? That we can look at somebody and say, oh, you have slanted eyes, oh, you're dark, oh, you're white, you're okay? No, we're all human beings and under God, and I am blessed by all the international people whom I've met, legal or not. And please, let's keep going, and it's gonna be a fight because we're fighting a kind of a sick person. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up.
Again, Donald Sherman, 3215 Seymour Road in Eau Claire. And as far, and it was a few, and I've had some positive impressions of the Hmong people in Eau Claire, although I've not had a whole lot of direct contact with any of them, you know, a whole lot. But overall, you know, I've seen them larger in public areas, and I've come to respect their, you know, submission to the American ways of doing business and abiding by the American laws, adapting to American laws and custom and so on. And so it's something I do not bring up, you know, very lightly. But I do believe that the Hmong people are, you know, very law-abiding, and they adapt very well to American customs. And it's not, something I would not say was all of the areas of foreigners in the United States. I'm sure you've heard about foreigners in other areas of the United States, especially like California and New York State, where the story is quite different, you know. So I would not elaborate on that. But I do believe the Hmong people are very adaptive to American laws and customs. They're very nice people they meet. Apparently, a lot of them are refugees who played by the rules to get to the United States. And John Lord, I want to thank you very much for having contact with me after that campaign meeting at CWCTC. I do believe you did play by the rules, especially you did say that it took about two years. I mean, that's a long 24 months or so, you know, to go through a whole process, so I have respect for that. So I support your, yes, vote for the resolution tomorrow afternoon. So, but I need any questions?
Thank you for coming on.
Welcome, and John, again, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. First and foremost, thank you-
And thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and address this governing body this evening. My name is Deng Yang, and my address is 2003 Meadow Lane, here in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. I have the distinct privilege of serving as the Director for the Office of Multicultural Affairs at UW Eau Claire as well. In addition to that, I have had the opportunity to be a student at UW Eau Claire and graduated many years ago, and so this community means a lot to me as well. And my father, who is a refugee from Southeast Asia, from Laos, always taught me to be daring, and so I'm hoping that I'm able to live up to that this evening really briefly. One specific statement always comes to my mind in moments like this, that Mahatma Gandhi articulated, saying that the true measure of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable members. And I believe that's an opportunity for us to live up to that. 1,259 of our students at UW Eau Claire self-identify as a student of color. Out of that 1,200 approximate students, 213 students specifically identify as Southeast Asian. And a large majority of those Southeast Asian students are of Hmong descent. And I have the opportunity to work every single day addressing students' needs, and specifically, oftentimes working with students in crisis. Those situations may involve anything as wide as, like, working with a student who's addressing personal matters, getting them connected with mental health counseling, perhaps working with them to address, like, concerns, family or personal situations, and oftentimes is working with them to help navigate this, the institution in such a way that is culturally appropriate. And out of those 213 students who self-identify Southeast Asian, I know for a fact that this type of action would absolutely impact them. I oftentimes work with students who are addressing personal issues and addressing situations with the family too as well, whether it's a funeral, or a wedding, or situations with family members or extended family members. I myself have extended family members who are undocumented as well, and those 213 students would certainly have to address that too. So this is more than just a professional situation too, it is also a very personal situation, and I want you to take that into consideration too. My father, at the age of 14, was a direct combatant in Southeast Asia, and I remember, as he was telling me to be daring, he would tell me stories about his own particular experience in Southeast Asia. He used to tell me that as long as you were taller than AK-47, they asked you to fight. And so, in 1975, in the fall of Saigon, when the United States pulled out of Southeast Asia, he was 16 years old, so he'd been fighting for two years. At that particular point, he was younger, so six children. He had two older sisters and three older brothers, two of which passed away directly in combat. And so, he spent, him and my mother got married shortly after the fall of Saigon, and they spent three years in the jungle. And they used to tell me stories about having to move from spending one week in a specific location, perhaps to a month in a specific location, and during that time, they would build small shelters that would stand no more than three feet off the ground in order to avoid the path at Laos. They would run away from gunfire on a daily basis. After the fall of Saigon, they left their village, which was located near Samnoa, Laos, northeast portion of Laos, near the border of North Korea. And at that particular point, they took their entire village with them. By the time the three years were over, only half the village still survived. And so I consider myself very lucky to be here today, and lucky to be in the United States, and I think it's absolutely vital for you to take into consideration, not just our students and the impact that it's going to have here at UW Eau Claire, but also looking at the different individuals whose direct impact from that particular conflict, and the type of contributions that they continue to give to this community. And so, as I think about the 213 students, who's my priority at this particular point, I want you to think, I want you to take into serious consideration of supporting this particular legislation and resolution, but not only that, but also supporting in such a way that's going to provide some substance and some meat behind it too as well. I encourage you, as members, to exercise your right and your voice as representatives of the small community, to be daring too. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming up.
I'm on time this time. My name is Katie Wilson of 602 East MacArthur in Eau Claire. And I think everybody else has had an amazing story here, and I think we'll all agree that there shouldn't be any dry eyes right now in the, in the audience or in the council. And nobody deserves to live in fear. We were at a rally earlier this evening, and there were a lot more people at the rally than have been able to stay. And I hope that you recognize that there are a lot more people than are sitting here tonight that support this resolution, and thank you for bringing it forward. Nobody deserves to live in fear, and one of the things they did in the rally was to give us each a piece of paper, and on that piece of paper were some people, figures, and they had us tear it apart at a certain point, and think about that as our own family being torn apart. And it's pretty heavy, and we ask you to support this resolution and support the people that are part of our community. Thank you.
Thanks for coming up.
Thank you.
I grew up in Menominee, and there was a very big Hmong population there, and most of my friends were Hmong. Being the only Jewish kid in that area, it was definitely difficult, but I always had a lot of Hmong friends. I was the only non-Hmong person that sat at the Hmong tables in junior high, because there was a lot of, you know, racism going on. So I always had a lot of Hmong friends that I always had my back anytime somebody would try to mess with me about being in special ed or being Jewish, and numerous times, they came to my defense. I think that this whole crap, trying to deport them, is just absolute bullshit, and I think that they need to absolutely not pass this. I mean, we need to absolutely protect Hmong people. They protected me when I was a kid growing up, and just like people protected my people during the Holocaust. I have a three-bedroom place. I live by myself, so if any Hmong person needs an open home, they can come live with me. That's why I didn't give my real address.
Anyone else that wishes to speak to this item? Good evening.
My name is Robert Haddabon, and 417 Long Street. I am also running for the second district, or District Two of Eau Claire County, in case you're concerned, or live in that area. I need your vote, appreciate it. Okay, what did we learn tonight? First off, we learned that these people obviously don't want to go back to a system that we're pushing for, for one. These countries are, as been told, dung-hold heaps, right, or dung heap, the countries. Trump has been there, he's seen them, and I do not blame you for wanting to go back, because like Bernie Sanders says, you will end up in a, you'll learn to read. Yeah, you'll learn to read at a re-educational camp while you're working at gunpoint, because that's how it works. I mean, these are so-called socialist countries, communist countries, which they are not. They're Nazi or fascist, and based on slave labor. So anyway, I'll get on with my speech. This is all off the cuff here. I'm a very liberal-minded guy, so I had nothing when I walked in here, so let's work with First off, I thought the thing was, I thought we were deporting criminals. There's a movie out right now called Somebody's Daughter. Have you heard about that? Where the MS-13, the gangs from Mexico that Trump wants to deport, who are up here slaughtering the Indian girls. Anybody heard about that movie yet? Anyway, okay, it's on the house here, you guys, look it up. But it was not just Hmong. He's not deporting doctors or anything like that, and it was criminals, right? Well, you guys, okay. I guess I'm the news guy here. So anyway, I guess I stand with the people of the Hmong. What we shouldn't, instead of the people, exporting the people, we should be deporting or exporting our, this utopia of the United States version to the world, because we are the utopia of the world. We're heaven on earth. I mean, we have everything, the freest lifestyles, and the best of everything. I mean, God furnished us with that, because we acknowledged Him. We are actually maybe being punished because we didn't free the world. We had the power to do that. We stood back and let it become what these people are running away from now, when we had the opportunity to stop that. So anyway, here we are. So anyway, last note is, you're going to love it. Let's free Thailand, Laos, Cambodia, Vietnam, Russia, and of course, China. All right, my rallying cry. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item?
I would like that.
Kenneth, is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, we will close the public discussion and move on to the public commentary period. I'm with Ms. Morgan. We have, so we have some individuals that have signed up in regards to the public commentary period, so I'm just going to go through the protocol quickly, if you have a moment. For those of you that wish to speak this evening and not signed up, please let us know. I will call you up in the order that's listed here on the signup sheet. Please state your name and your city of Eau Claire address. The public comment period is for those living or working in the city. Please note that your thoughts or ideas should be regarding issues or concerns of citywide application, and please do not comment on issues that were on tonight's agenda, as council wants and needs to hear those comments during the noticed hearing or discussion. You will have three minutes to speak, and the same light system will be in use. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute remaining. Comment period will last for 20 minutes unless it is the wish of two-thirds of the council to extend it. Ms. Roberts, Zoe Roberts, are you? I'm guessing a lot of these have already spoke. I think it looks like, is there anyone that wishes to speak, that has signed up on here that would like to speak to something other than what we've spoken to tonight on the agenda? Mr. Hennig?
Lee Hennig, 3150 Runway Avenue. I'd like to start a conversation about single moms and housing on Runway Avenue. Recently, Mr. Peters had an article in the Leader Telegraph talking about when people don't shovel their snow, and the city charges $75 an hour for a contractor to come out and remove snow. The city of Eau Claire Housing charges $188 to shovel a sidewalk from single moms who have pennies at the end of the month. There's a big discrepancy. That doesn't make sense to me. They also do the same for grass cutting. They don't have any absolute, they just have, a guy walks by, and he looks at the grass, and it's all subjective, there's no two-by-four, cut it five inches or seven inches, whatever the ordinance is, they just arbitrarily decide. In Runway, there's Pregent Realty, which owns property sidewalks on Lark, Cardinal, and McIntyre, that hasn't been shoveled all winter, and they don't get even challenged. Recently, I spent the last three months extensively in the Third Ward in Randall Park neighborhood, and I have personally witnessed hundreds and hundreds of sidewalks not shoveled. But a single mom, well, if she misses by literally minutes on a 24-hour notice, she gets charged $188. Dunn County and Chippewa County do not have that same restrictive movement. Something is wrong and smells rotten. We have numerous moms getting kicked out, and housing sits for 60 days with, we have got at least a year's waiting list. And this is just going to be the start of the conversation, and will be people coming on an ongoing basis, and I just wanted to start the conversation about discrepancies. We have a moral obligation to look at this. I don't think we're following federal regulations, and I know damn well that we're pushing federal discrimination areas, because it seems to be the single moms that are targeted. I can't prove this is citywide, but I do believe it is. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, were you signed up on the?
No.
Okay. Pardon?
Is that okay?
It's, I guess.
It'll be quick.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Once again, my name's Stephanie Hoeksma. I live at 416 Sixth Avenue. So this is something that I did not come here to speak about, but I've been thinking about it for about a week now, so I figured if I have the chance right now, I might as well bring it up. Okay, so I live off of Water Street, right next to the Chippewa River. I'm not from Wisconsin, so moving here and having the Chippewa River next to me has brought just so much beauty to my life, honestly, in so many ways. It's a great part of our campus, our community, and we should really cherish it more. I come here today actually sort of half like anger, but also sort of motivation to do something. So a few years ago, there was an ordinance passed about good order ordinance, and like it or not, a lot of those ordinances disproportionately affected students, and I understand sort of the value of that in some respects. However, I feel that our community needs a lot more help, specifically in regards to our pollution of the Chippewa River. Within that ordinance, there were components of having people cleaning up the trash outside of their yard, so not just students, but homeowners and things like that. So there is basically a policy that would allow the city to find people if they had trash in their yard. Awesome, yeah, that's great, we should definitely clean up our trash. However, our homeowners are not being, our, sorry, our businesses are not being held to the same standard. So we have businesses all along the Chippewa River, parallel to it, right next to Water Street, the trail's right there. We have plastic cups, straws, all of that. I was just walking home from campus the other day, and I saw just so many straws and cups just literally waiting to fall over right into the river. And truly, this is not even about us. It's about the other species that occupy and inhabit that land. The ducks eat any of the trash that's down there. And like I said, I'm not exactly sure what needs to be done, but I know that we need to clean up our area next to the river, and please protect the ducks. Thank you.
Well, there was Mike Fisher. He's all gone, okay. Looks like we got everybody that was on the commentary signup sheet. There is no one else. We will close the public portion of this meeting, and thank you all for joining us and participating in your engagement. It is appreciated. So we are now going to go, it is the intention anyway for a council to go into closed session. Upon a motion by Councilmember Lor and seconded by Councilmember Christopherson, the City Council may go into closed session to receive an update and provide direction regarding the potential acquisition of property for economic and industrial development purposes, which is permitted in closed session for competitive or bargaining reasons pursuant to Section 19.85 of the Wisconsin statutes. Does council have any questions in regards to this closed session? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
And we are in closed session.
The Eau Claire City Council meeting will return in a moment. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. We now return you to the Eau Claire City Council meeting. We now return you to the Eau Claire City Council meeting.
Here.
Beaton? Bergy? Christopherson?
Here.
Emmanuel?
Here.
Gregert?
Here.
Klinkhammer? Lor?
Here.
Weld?
Here.
Worthman?
Here.
And good afternoon, and welcome to all of you that are joining us here today, and appreciate those of you that are watching at home. Today is March 10th, and this is our legislative session of the Eau Claire City Council. During its legislative session, the council deliberates and takes action on the agenda items before us today. City staff and council members have spent a great deal of time preparing for this meeting, and thank you to the residents that joined us here last night for your comments and thoughts during our public hearings, and also those of you that reached out to us today. Thank you to Valley Media Works for live streaming this meeting. To watch, please visit valleymediaworks.org or visit Channel 994 on Spectrum Cable. We have a full agenda, so we'll get started. The first item of business is the consent agenda. Anyone here this evening in regards to an item that is listed on the consent agenda, just know that there'll just be one vote. If it is approved, then know that your item is approved as well. Do council members have any questions regarding the consent agenda, or wish to pull off any Seeing none, then upon a motion by Councilmember Lor and seconded by Councilmember Christopherson, the consent agenda has been moved and discussion is in order. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
And the consent agenda has passed. We have one proclamation this evening, and if I could have Bruce Oderkirk and Kamamo Wohomi, Vicky Thomas, Katie Strope, and Patty Cologne from Trio join me up at the podium.
Good afternoon. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. So, we're here to recognize Trio, and certainly the work that they do with the university and our community. And this proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the programs known as Trio, which provide services for students whose parents have not graduated from college, students from low-income households, and students with disabilities are an integral part of the education of many students in Eau Claire and across the state. And whereas the Trio programs in Eau Claire, including Upward Bound Student Support Services, AIM, and the McNair Program, serve over 500 students annually and produce numerous educational success stories, including many graduates who go on to professional careers and take active roles in contributing to their communities. And Trio programs are recognized nationwide for their ability to motivate, assist, retain, and graduate eligible students. And the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire receives over $1 million a year in federal Trio funding to provide services for eligible students. Now therefore I, Terry Weld, President of the Eau Claire City Council, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim April 8th, 2020, as Trio Day, and the City of Eau Claire urge all citizens to recognize this observance. Thank you again.
On behalf of all of the Trio staff, I'd like to thank the City Council for issuing this proclamation. I know I always feel honored, and our students feel really impressed when we display this proclamation at our annual Trio Day event on campus. As President Weld mentioned, there are four Trio programs at UW Eau Claire currently. The one I direct is called Student Support Services, and we work with 300 students on campus who are first-generation college students or from families of limited income, and provide a wide range of resources and services to try to help them have a successful college experience. Vicky directs a very similar program.
Hi, thank you again. Every year, we look forward to coming here. So I direct the program called AIM, Ability in Motion. It's also a student support services program, but it's for special populations, students with disabilities. So we have 100 of our students who need a little extra assistance in that program. And I have a couple of my colleagues with me today, and we can thank Katie for the slides that you saw. She organized that, so you could see a little example of some of the events that we have. But Katie, you want to introduce yourself and your role?
Yes. Thanks, I'm Katie Strope, and I'm an academic advising coordinator with the AIM program.
Hi, thank you. My name is Patty Cologne, and I work with Career Services, so I help students with finding jobs or going to graduate school when they leave UWEC.
We just like to thank the community because all of the students at Eau Claire have to do a service learning component to their graduation, and some of our students kind of struggle sometimes finding a place where they can do that, based on some of the barriers they may have with a disability, so we like to thank the community for any assistance in welcoming them at their agencies. So thank you.
I can see I don't get introduced. Just kidding. Nothing personal. Good afternoon and thank you. And did I miss the tea and biscuits? I'm from Kenya, but never mind. I'm Kamamo Wohomi, and I'm the Director of the Upward Bound Pedag College Program at UWEC. We've been here since 1990. We serve 74 students in the two Eau Claire School District High Schools, North and Memorial, or like I like to tell them, the school that has the chihuahua and the one that has the And our goal is to get them through high school, skills, motivation, academic career, personal, financially, college. We graduated 20 students last spring, all 20 matriculated to the post-secondary level, and in fact, a full 50% of them, 10 of them matriculated to UWEC, and actually we connected them to Bruce and Student Support Services. Thank you.
One of our colleagues couldn't make it today. There's also a Ronald E. McNair Postbaccalaurate Achievement Program that works with students in order to prepare them to enter and complete graduate programs leading to the PhD. But Kelly Wonder took a group of students to a graduate school conference today, so she's not able to make it. But thank you again.
All right, we'll move on to our business agenda, and begin with Agenda Item Number 14, which is a final resolution approving the project and levying special assessments for street and utility improvements on Water Street, First Avenue, to Second Avenue, which is postponed from the February 11th, 2020 council meeting. Does council have any additional questions for Mr. Solberg? Councilmember Gregor?
Yeah, thank you, President Weld. Just had a, maybe a quick question for Mr. Solberg. Thank you. I know we chatted a bit yesterday and throughout the process here about the request from the university to have a RRFB, the Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon at Second Avenue and Water Street, so that people could more easily cross Water Street at that location. One of the things that, one of the, I guess the alternatives, at least to make one step closer to a safer intersection, is to do signage there, because right now, in fact, we don't have any. Is that correct? And do you feel like that'll satisfy some of the goals?
Correct. When we looked at the, some spacing distances with some of our other communities throughout the country, the distance from First Avenue to Second Avenue was shorter than what many communities recommend for having RFBs adjacent to the traffic signals. So the recommended course of treatment is to install pedestrian crossing signs, which we are planning to do with the project with all of our other new signs that will go in, whether it's speed limit signs, or stop signs, or so forth. But we were planning to install those across Water Street for that. And then hopefully, that will be a safety improvement at that intersection, and if there are concerns in the future, we can always revisit it.
Any other questions for Mr. Solberg? Let's see. Thank you for coming out. Upon a motion then by Councilmember Worthman and seconded by Councilmember Gregor, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Gregor?
Yeah, thank you, President Weld. Just want to take a moment to thank some of the folks that were involved in the last month of conversation that resulted from this council offering a bit more time by postponing this item by two meetings, basically a full month, so that the university, which owns the property on either side of this project on Water Street, you know, could have some input on it that was specific to, you know, the needs of the campus. Obviously, there was that opportunity through our typical public hearing process, but Mr. Solberg, as he mentioned yesterday, was able to meet with the administration and meet with UW Eau Claire Bike and Pedestrian Committee as well. So that's, so I wanted to thank the university for being a part of that, and Mr. Solberg for his time. The, you know, one of the big discussion points that I kind of grappled with myself attending, you know, at least one of those meetings with Mr. Solberg, and also having additional conversations, attending Student Senate, and distributing some draft plans, was the recommendation from BPAC to have our Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee on the city level to have a, another option, I guess, to cross that intersection of Water Street with First Avenue from, particularly the crossing from the Hosfine Arts side north, and how to connect to the bike lanes, you know, and just the discussion around the e-scooter, potential for e-scooters in the community, or electric bicycles that would potentially not be allowed, as they are not allowed right now on our multi-use paths, so therefore they could not go underneath the Water Street Bridge as an alternative. Ultimately, I think it sounds like it's something that we could change in the future relatively easily, is to add a diagonal crossing so that people could go from the south end of the road to the northbound First Avenue bike lanes. But there definitely are problems right now, I would say, that, you know, with people who are riding bicycles that maybe don't know about the underpass, where they may end up going across and go onto the sidewalk, or go the wrong way on the bike lane. So I guess it's somewhat of a wait-and-see thing from my perspective, because there was kind of mixed support, or at least maybe a little bit too much neutrality on the topic of changing this. But I do have a number of other recommended changes that came out of this additional time that I'd like to present in the form of a motion to amend the resolution pertaining to Water Street. So I could introduce that and distribute it.
Sure. You have a motion to amend, is there a second?
Aye.
Councilmember Beaton is seconded?
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton, for your second. So just to introduce this kind of array of additional improvements to this block of Water Street, essentially what's contained in this motion is to amend the Water Street Engineering Report to include adding camera detection to the existing traffic signals as one thing we want to do, we're doing with this. So essentially, when you, oh, and then I'll just go through it. Add one foot of width to the originally proposed bike lanes, and then reconstructing the curb and gutter at Second Avenue to make the pedestrian crossing more narrow, reconstructing the north curb ramp at First Avenue to twice the existing width, and placing pavement markings at the northwest quadrant of the First Avenue and Water Street intersection to reduce the radius of the corner to match the bus-turning radius. So that's the amendment. And I could give some rationale at this point, or I could?
Go ahead if you have more to add.
Yeah, essentially, collectively, this makes it easier to both bike along the corridor and then by widening the bike lanes primarily, and then makes it easier to cross because we'll have a more narrow intersection on the west of Second Avenue. It'll also, I think one of the significant things is just a bike being able to trigger the change of the lights when they come to the intersection from any direction. And that was mentioned last night by one of our public input speakers, was that, you know, essentially, it treats a bicyclist the same as a driver if they're able to be detected in the intersection, as we're doing with most of our new, basically all of our new traffic lights have cameras that detect bicyclists, and this would upgrade that intersection to do that, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beaton? Anyone else have any discussion in regards to the amendment that's before us? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
And that amendment passes. Back to the final resolution. Is there any discussion in regards to? Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, President Weld. I would just like to say that I will be happy to support this amended motion. The university is just a really hub of youthful participation in our community, the bicycle traffic in and out of campus, this would be one of the major entry points. I thought that the conversation and discussion with the surrounding neighbors was really meaningful and helpful in coming up with something that was good and then better for this particular area. And I also want to say that particularly, I liked the conversation around the scatter signal and the way in which we can analyze whether or not you're solving a problem or anticipating a problem, and I like the way that we landed in a place that that can be easily changed. So I like these improvements, and I'm happy to support it.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President Weld. Just want to say thanks to the university's BPAC Commission for weighing in on this and taking an active role. It's helped our conversation, it's helped this piece of legislation. The other thing I want to point out is, we have made this intersection so much safer than it was, I guess it was roughly a decade ago, when the first improvements were made. Now to see these additional improvements, it's a good thing. And I want to just thank the BPAC Commission, I want to thank the university for being integral to this, Mr. Solberg, and all the work that has gone into bringing this forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Worthman. Any other discussion regarding the resolution? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 15 is a final resolution approving the project and levying special assessments for street and utility improvements on Lake Street and Second Avenue to Fifth Avenue. Does council have any additional questions for Mr. Solberg? Councilmember Gregor?
Yeah, thank you, President Weld. Just one question for Mr. Solberg. Thank you. I noticed that in the designs, there's a number of crosswalks crossing Lake Street, and obviously, it has a classification as an arterial, is that correct?
Correct.
So one of the intersections that I at least use frequently, and because it has the most connect- some of the most connectivity, but also doesn't happen to have stoplights. And that's the intersection with Third Avenue. And I noticed there weren't any crosswalks like painted there. I was wondering if you could describe like how you chose where the crosswalks are and maybe why there aren't, they aren't at that intersection?
We, we have signals at First and Fifth Avenue, so we wanted to encourage crossing at those intersections. Currently, there are crosswalks marked at Fourth and Second and we're moving the crosswalk from Second up to Oxford Avenue with an RRFB. So I guess we felt with signals at First and Fifth and then an RRFB at Oxford approximately in the middle and a crosswalk marked at Fourth, that that was going to be adequate to get people across there. And it just comes down to a cost with putting crosswalks everywhere, then we have to maintain them in the future. And we felt that with it being bookended with signals that and then a intermediate one, although it's a little bit on the east side, that it would suffice, I guess was our thought going into it.
Just maybe a follow-up to that. I guess, so I know that sometimes at an intersection where there's, it's kind of like a four-way intersection versus like a T-intersection as some of those others are. It's maybe more predictable that for drivers to, to look for pedestrians and it's easier typically for pedestrians to cross because it's a more typical intersection. I guess that's one of the reasons why I don't really plan to like, just propose an amendment or anything. But could you maybe speak to the difference between a, a four-way intersection versus a, a T-intersection and how they may need different pedestrian treatment for it?
Well, we generally try to have our, if we have our choice between a T and a four-way, we try to have them cross at a four-way intersection because you have, you know, you see four directions to go if you're going north, south, east, west. But there is also pedestrian behavior. If they're used to it crossing, if they're already at a T-intersection and there's a crosswalk there and we haven't had any problems and there isn't one down, we try to keep the patterns the same unless, like this is a safe route to school, so we're adding them at the side streets, crosswalks on all the side streets because that's part of the safe routes to school plan that that was determined to be a wise use. So the, the parallel routes are marked, but it's, if it was a brand-new street and there wasn't that behavior before in the history, we probably would lean towards putting them towards the four-legged intersections as opposed to a three-legged. But it's already existing at Fourth, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Solberg? Thank you for coming up. On a motion then by Council Vice President Emanuel and Councilmember Beaton, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 16 is a resolution ordering sidewalk to be repaired in accordance with Wisconsin statute, section 66.0907 on Lake Street from Second Avenue to Fifth Avenue. Does council have any questions for Mr. Solberg in this regard? Seeing none? Motion by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Lor, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregert?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 17 is a resolution accepting and appropriating a 2019 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance. Because this item amends the budget, a two-thirds vote or eight affirmative votes is needed for passage. Ms. Thompson, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. This resolution accepts and appropriates a grant for approximately $15,700. It would cover approximately half the cost of 50 ballistic vests. These vests are being replaced just to, to be in the end of their useful life. We receive this grant annually, so it's something we usually receive, so I can take questions if there are any.
Does council have any questions for Ms. Thompson? See me, thanks for coming up. On a motion then by Councilmember Christopherson and seconded by Councilmember Worthman, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 18 is a resolution authorizing the Community Services Department to accept a $1,000 donation from Chippewa Valley Transit Alliance for free transit rides on Earth Day and for marketing this event. Again, because this item amends the budget, a two-thirds vote or eight affirmative votes are needed for passage. Good afternoon, Mr. White.
Good afternoon and thank you, Council President and council members. Very happy to bring this resolution before you. And last year, the same, went through the same procedure and we provided 5,200 trips on Earth Day, which was about 20 cent, 20% more than the previous Monday. It was on Monday last year and the following day, it was again about 20% more trips. So we saw a very significant increase in ridership on, as we dissolved that. And so we'd like to thank the Chippewa Valley Transit Alliance for their generous donation.
That's great. Thank you. Any questions from council? Thanks for coming up. On a motion then by Councilmember Gregert and seconded by Council Vice President Emanuel, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, President. Well, I, I simply want to acknowledge the partnerships that we have in our community and the creative ways in which staff is creating these really interesting experiences for families. You, you can't be a rider if you've never ridden on a bus. So when you get families and children on a bus, it's, it's always better. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 19 is a resolution authorizing a library appropriation adjustment for the 2019 adopted operating budget. Because this item amends the budget, a two-thirds vote or eight affirmative votes is needed for passage. Ms. Westby? Is that correct?
Hi, thank you. President, well, I am here to ask for a budget amendment to change the, the operating budget for the library using fund balance of $227 to cover consulting fees for the library capital campaign. And that funding will be replenished through the use of our Story Builder campaign that is held within the community, Eau Claire Community Foundation. And at the time, we did not have that in our fund, but we do now. So that grant, we actually received the grant today, so it's a, it's a wash.
Great. Any questions from council? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Sorry to stumble.
No worries. Thanks. On a motion then by Councilmember Beaton and seconded by Councilmember Anderson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worthman? Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 20 is a resolution authorizing the FY 2020 budget reappropriations within the city's water capital fund. Again, because this item amends the budget, a two-thirds vote or eight affirmative votes is needed. Good afternoon, Mr. Solberg.
Good afternoon, Council President. Well, and council members. This resolution will authorize the reappropriation of $400,000 within the city's water capital fund for some higher-than-anticipated costs related to Phase Two improvements at the water treatment plant. These, these are, it's Phase Two of what is essentially ongoing improvements that were originally called for as part of the 2014 facility evaluation. Specifically, this involves the sedimentation basin improvements and pitless well projects. When this is all said and done, this will, this will essentially accomplish modernizing, automating and making the plant more efficient, similar to what was done at the wastewater treatment plant recently. And so the higher-than-anticipated costs were due to the fact that when excavation began on the sedimentation basin portion of the project, it was discovered that the piping leading into the, the sedimentation basin area was steel. That was not called for within the, the bidding documents of the, or I guess the, the proposals that we received in response to our bid documents. Those were called out as ductile iron. So there are special fittings that have to be constructed over the existing steel pipes to allow for a, essentially a solid fit onto the ductile iron pipes that will lead into the basin itself that are being installed as part of this project. So that's, that's what results in the higher-than-anticipated cost there. The pitless well project, this is a, a method for essentially creating a new well that's new to the city of Eau Claire. So when the budget was, was created for this project in, in consultation with the city's consultant, SEH, it was done based on best estimates, essentially determined based on cost experiences of other communities that have done this. What we found with this project is that, and so just briefly, what, what the pitless well method allows us to do is make use of an, of an existing wellhouse and some of the components within that existing wellhouse. So you're not drilling a brand-new well and putting a wellhouse over it and all the components that go into it. You're not running new water main to it, electric and fiber optic conduit. You're able to make use of a lot of that existing stuff within an existing wellhouse. So overall, it is a much more cost-effective method than the traditional well development would be. But we did experience those cost overages due to the fact that we did still need to replace some of the electrical components within the existing wellhouse in order to make this work. That was not originally anticipated to be the case. However, as I said, still a more cost-effective solution than, than the alternative. What, what we're going to do to make, to make this reappropriation, to effectuate it essentially, is to reduce the funding available to the water system expansion project that was appropriated as part of the 2020 CIP. So that budget will be reduced to $400,000. So funding will still be there if annexations were to occur that water main would have to be extended to new properties in, just, just less funding in order to make this feasible. In addition, the Chippewa River Crossing Project will be delayed and you will see that as part of the 2021 CIP. So in consultation with our utility staff, they did look at projects that we could delay or reduce funding in in order to make this higher prioritized project work, given these higher costs that we've experienced. So you will see that in the 2021 CIP, that that project has been delayed in order to make, to make this possible. So I would be glad to take any questions on that.
Thank you. Any questions from council? See me, thank you very much. On a motion then by Councilmember Lor and seconded by Councilmember Christopherson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 21 is a resolution approving adopt a park trail program in the city of Eau Claire. Mr. Plaza, welcome.
Thank you. It's very nice to be here, Council President and council members. Today, we want to propose a, a recommendation to implement an adopt a park trail program. The leadership, Eau Claire leadership team would like to assist in the implementation of this program. The Parks and Recreation Division feel that this would present one strong volunteer program for our residents to participate in. The branding of this program would help encourage groups and organizations to get involved and help to maintain and beautify our parks and trail system. In addition, it would at least a minimum assist with our parks, maintenance staff in the spring and the fall. I brought, Julie Booth is here. She's been with the leadership team since the beginning and I believe she would like to say some words also.
Hi, thanks for having us here. My name is Julie Booth and I'm one of the program supervisors in the Recreation Division. And part of my position is to act as the volunteer coordinator for the city. And when I first came onto this position, one of the items that we wanted to focus on is, is how can we collaborate with some agencies and encourage other outside businesses? So when the leadership Eau Claire group came forward to offer some of their services to help us organize this, it was, I thought a great idea because they all come, their group all comes from a wide variety of areas within the city. So I'm, I'm not going to steal their thunder to talk about what they want to propose, but I would be the person that would be that liaison for the proposed program that they'd like to, to start. One of my goals is that it's a program that is very sustainable and that can reach the wide array of community areas that we have in, in our beautiful city. So with no further ado, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We did bring some updated brochures. I think you guys got a copy in your package, but we've got some shiny new ones for you if you would like. What we've basically done is put together an implementation process and assemble the materials and policies and guidelines for a program that would allow members of the community to adopt a park or trail and commit to a two-year term of service with a group or whether it's five or 10 or 20 people would officially adopt a park. They'd get signed, they'd get recognized publicly for their efforts and they'd commit to once a month working with the city of Eau Claire, Julie or representative to oversee what they're doing, but they'd be in charge of cleaning and maintaining and, you know, reporting any major projects, but, but keep our 52 parks and numerous trails clean and usable by the community. This project would also entail, what we've got is a, from the brochure and policies now and then we're hoping to leave them with a marketing plan as well and then some other management steps so that when we, you know, our program ends in May, but then the city has what it needs to maintain this program and keep it running and successful. What questions do you guys have?
Does council have any questions? Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for the work that you're doing on this. And I guess my question is along the lines of the current support that we do have in our community. I know there's a beautification group and maybe there's some other groups and I assume that you're already collaborating with those other groups that are already in our community helping with beautification?
Julie is definitely well-connected with some of the neighborhood associations and organizations that are already, you know, stepping up. So some of our, our hopes in this, when I came in the position,
Just have it come up.
There, there was a, a wider variety of, of different programs. Neighborhood associations, as well as some of our parks like at Phoenix and some, I'm sorry, not Phoenix. And at Cobra Works, works with, at Pinehurst. And so we're encouraging the, the group and then myself to work with, with those groups once the program is installed, so we can kind of have a one-stop shop.
Yeah.
Per se, in that, in that we can have some of the same policies and procedures and just streamline the process for not only encouraging people to get involved, but also sustaining those people who already are involved within their neighborhoods.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Thank you all for coming up and all of your work. Thank you. On a motion then by Councilmember Worthman and seconded by Councilmember Gregert, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, President. Well, this is fabulous. I think that as I became involved with neighborhood associations, it's just having people more aware... aware of how they can interact, where they can access the government and the, the beautiful parks that we have. So, the more organized, the easier it is to identify and to really make that connection is, is going to be a huge lift to the, the maintenance of our parks. I'm, I'm grateful for this effort.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Councilmember Gregert.
Yeah, thank you, President Weld, and, you know, thank you for everyone that's been involved in this. And, you know, I think Leadership Eau Claire is a good, you know, example of, you know, a group that really has, you know, creates different impacts in our community that have a really long life. And, and this sounds like something is, that is, you know, we've been talking about these types of programs at, at the city level, and we've had various versions of them, but we really, I think we have something that is much, that's going to create a more solid foundation because it has, you know, more research behind it, it has, you know, the extra energy that, that a group can bring to it. So, and I appreciate the, the extra energy coming from our staff to do this too because it's going to be, going to be big and really going to provide more opportunities for the community to step up in different ways. Really appreciate how the trails are included as well and not just the parks. And I know that, you know, the second number, second-most number of miles of trail of any city in the state, so it's a, so it's something that'll help us continue with that status in a very positive way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregert. Councilmember Workman.
Thank you, council president. I also just wanted to add my thanks for the work that you're doing to bring this together. Two things. One is that it seems to me that there are already a lot of organizations, neighborhoods, and folks in our community who want to be helping out more, and that what you're doing is going to be helping provide that bridge so that people can get engaged and get involved. And so, you know, I think that's important. I also know that projects like the Edible Landscape on Forest Street, which I think is in its fourth year, would be a huge beneficiary of something like this, as would some of the things that are being talked about in Boyd Park redesign, and probably countless other places across our community. So, you know, we have these budget constraints that we have to, to work with, but at the same time, we have a community that's growing and a community that loves its parks and loves its trails. And so, this kind of collaboration to me is the way that we kind of figure out our way through that. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? I would just like to welcome Mr. Plaza. He is our new Parks and Forestry and Cemetery manager, and so, welcome, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
I'm very excited to be here today.
That's great. Thank you. If there is no other discussion, city clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Law.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number twenty-two is a resolution approving a site plan in a Pete Public District for bleacher and restroom renovations at the Carson Park Baseball Stadium located in Carson Park. Does council have any additional questions for Mr. Pipinger or Mr. Ivory? Council vice president, pardon, Mr. Pipinger?
President.
Oh, city, I'm sorry. It's for the city manager.
Thank you. Mr. Peters, you had a chance to email council just some additional information today, and I'm wondering if you can share that for folks who might have been watching, because I think it was really excellent follow-up information.
Certainly. Thank you. So, that last night, you had a presentation on the site plan for the Carson Park Baseball Stadium, and one of the people who stood up and spoke asked about a play area related to the stadium. And we wanted to just point out that along the third baseline is an area that is used for and dedicated to a play area, and that that area has, over the years, some toys and some inflatable things and that, that the kids can use and play in. And actually, with this site plan that you're considering, the, the reconfiguration of the bleachers is actually going to be expanding that area, and it's fully anticipated that the, the express will continue to, to put opportunities with equipment and toys in that area for kids to be able to play in during the games.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion or questions, I should say? Councilmember Gregert.
Yeah, thank you, President Weld. I guess my question was about the bike racks in the site plan. Maybe that would be for Mr. Pipinger.
Maybe I don't need a good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Pipinger. The, I guess the, you know, the, the site plan isn't specific as to where they're going to go, but there was mentioned on either, on both sides of the, the, the building. So, I guess I was wondering who, where the funding is going to come for those racks, if that's going to be part of our C I P, that we set aside funding for, for racks, or if that's part of the fundraising, the private fundraising side of it?
That would be coming from our C I P. It wouldn't be coming from the fundraising part of it. And we, when we look at projects like this, we earmark certain areas that we can expand and improve for bicycle storage. So, we don't want them tied up to trees, so, because we're doing a project here, we've earmarked these areas utilizing some of those funds we have.
Any other questions for Mr. Pipinger? Thanks for coming up. A motion then by Councilmember, Council Vice President Emanuel and seconded by Councilmember Beaton, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Law.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number twenty-three is a resolution condemning the deportation of Hmong and Lao ethnic minorities and the separation of families in the Chippewa Valley. Does council have any questions for Mr. Law or Mr. Workman in this regard? Council Vice President Emanuel.
Thank you, council president. I'm just wondering about if this passes tonight. I saw that the intention is to send this on to the United States congressional delegates. Does that also include our senate representatives? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then a motion by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Law, this item is moved. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, council president. Just want to say thank you again to Councilmember Law for helping to bring this forward this evening. I also want to give a special thanks to our Hmong community and leadership in our Hmong community who have stood up and shown leadership and helped bring support for this as well. And I think last night was a testament to the fact that our community feels strongly about the place that we all have in helping to build a more welcoming, a more loving, and a more respectful community. And, you know, I think last night, one of the things that struck me is just what it means to show up, what it means to turn out and to link arms and to speak together and to have a conversation that we're having here, where we recognize what these policies actually mean and what it could mean for our community. The thought of family members, Hmong community members potentially being torn from their homes here in Eau Claire, what that actually does in our community. That was something that I think, you know, I thought last night after our meeting, is something you can't replace on social media or, or TV or, or any of those other places, that it's human-to-human, that we're there together, that we are a community, that we're all brothers and sisters in this. So, I, I, to me, I think that's what this resolution does. It's that conversation, it's that statement that says, as a community, here are our principles, and we are not okay with the cruel and unjust treatment toward our Hmong brothers and sisters, and it's not okay for a policy like that to move forward. So, I think tonight, you know, hopefully, council members are able to support this resolution, but I think the greater thing is just this conversation that we're having and how it helps to change hearts and minds in our communities to recognize that there is a better path forward, that there is a better path forward. So, thank you again, council member, for, for bringing this forward to our community, and also, all of the incredible showing that we had, inboxes and, and telephone calls and, and the rally last night and the people showing up here to City Hall, it makes a difference. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Workman. Council Vice President Emanuel.
Thank you, Council President Weld. I want to speak in support of this this evening and thank my colleagues who brought this forth, and also to thank community members and leaders who helped to craft this important piece of legislation. Your work is appreciated and needed. I will emphatically be supporting this resolution this evening for two main reasons. The first is that there is a real cost of disrupting families, and I mean a financial cost. I was able to do a little bit of research, and the World Bank put out a report that talks about missed opportunities, the high cost of not educating girls. And what happens when you disrupt families and you disrupt economic stability is that you regress the advancement, in this case, of young women. That is not anything our community should or wants to be a part of. This research shows that annually, excuse me, not annually, but over twelve years of missed opportunity of educating a young female, a country can lose between fifteen trillion and thirty trillion dollars. So, here's the real-life implication of this. There's a family in Eau Claire, Wisconsin, who has to go back to a country that they do not know. They lose that economic security, they most certainly will lose out on that schooling opportunity, and who knows what happens to those little kids? There is no need to disrupt families that are well-established here, whether that's family by blood or family of choice. And here in Eau Claire, we have a strong family of choice who welcomes and embraces our Hmong community. I was able to go to Thailand, Laos, Cambodia just a few months ago, and it was really amazing to be on the Maekong River, thinking about all of these story quilts that we see in Eau Claire, that here's this gigantic river that people risk their lives to come over, and now are our friends in Eau Claire. I mean, these are our friends, and these have been my friends before my family moved to Eau Claire. I didn't really feel like I was at home until I came to a Hmong party, which, like Mexican parties, don't start on time, have lots of food, you can't leave without taking lots of food home with you, and you dance, and you appreciate, and you enjoy each other. And so, our Hmong brothers and sisters have most certainly become a permanent piece of the fabric of Eau Claire. We need you, we want you, and you got to stay here. So, I will be voting yes.
Thank you, Council Vice President Emanuel. Council, Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Council President Weld. I had the information or supporters that contacted me, there were only two out of the many, that had anything negative to say about the Hmong community, and they came from a very limited perspective. And I, I simply want to say that all of these beautiful things, everything that was presented last evening, all of those messages about community, I think we also have to say that we have an obligation not to be looking at who is a criminal and making this some kind of a blanket label that makes anything okay, but to look at the commitment that we made to this community when we brought all of these individuals out of what was their known land for our commitment to them and for their safety. And that's not a commitment that we can abandon. So, that piece, I think, from our conversation was new information to some individuals. And I think it's very important that we continue to have this conversation with our Hmong community so that we can bind ourselves more closely together and to understand really what it is that we're creating and what it is that we mean as community. So, I'm, I'm also happy to support this resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Councilmember Beaton.
Thank you. I, I feel proud to live in this community every day, but it's on nights like last night when my love for this community really shines the brightest. To see the showing that we had last night in city council chambers and at the rally beforehand is honestly the most beautiful thing that I think that we could ever experience in this community, to see folks come together, to support our neighbors is just really amazing. And so, I wanted to thank everybody who came out last night, the organizers of the event, of course, the authors of this resolution on this council and in the community. These deportation policies have, have made me distraught since they started coming out, but this one hit me the hardest. I'm young enough, I, I grew up in the nineties in Sheboygan, Wisconsin, and I'm young enough that from the moment I, I started school, I was going to school and making friends with kids in the Hmong community. I practically don't remember a life, a, a moment in my life where I didn't have Hmong friends. And my Hmong friends throughout my life have enhanced, enhanced my life, and they clearly enhance our community. I think that that's evident in, in everything that we do and see in our community. And so, I also will be emphatically supporting this resolution. I couldn't disagree with the, the deportation, deportation policies more. And so, I, I finally wanted to call upon the community to act further. This resolution is before us today, and we saw such a beautiful showing last night because the power of this community, what happens when we come together. And I think that the action can't stop tonight. I would encourage everyone in this council and in the community to call your, your senator, your federal senator, your state senators, your House of Representative members, your state assembly members, the governor, the president, and let them know that what happened here yesterday and today, and let them know that our community, that, that our community has declared that these things that they're doing are not right, that it's not okay. And so, yeah, thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, council president. I'll be brief because I think that the eloquence that I heard last night, both at the rally and here, from leaders in the Hmong community and many others who spoke in solidarity is beyond anything that I have to contribute, but I'm just so grateful to Councilmember Law and also Councilmember Workman for giving me this opportunity to support something that is just so crucial and is, as Councilmember Beaton points out, the first step in a walk of solidarity that we can take together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Gregert.
Thank you, President Weld. Yeah, I certainly will be supporting this resolution and, and also making some phone calls this week to other government officials on the higher levels of government here in this country. I think, you know, it's, it's great to have, you know, so many great leaders on this council and in this community that are able to, to bring people together like we saw last night and both at the rally and the march and, and here speaking with us. And I think it's, it really can hopefully galvanize the, you know, a lot more efforts and, and work that, that needs to happen ahead to make sure that we're protecting everyone in our community. And, you know, I mean, the city council essentially has a responsibility to not only provide those opportunities for people to have a voice, but to, to show that leadership of, in the specific ways like this resolution. So, just wanted to show my appreciation for it and all the work that went into it and, and. So just wanted to show my appreciation for it and all the work that went into it, and I'm happy to, you know, say what I can and do what I can when I see something that is wrong. So let's keep continuing to do that as a council and as a city. So, thank you.
Councilmember Emanuel, did you have it?
No, I apologize.
Councilmember Lor?
Thank you all, my council colleagues, and all the citizens, all the Hmong community leaders, that you have been supporting our families in Eau Claire and across the country that will be on the news. This make us feel that Eau Claire is our homes, that we will not go anywhere, will be continuing to build this community forward and getting our people building Eau Claire to be the better place in Wisconsin, and we will continue doing it our way. I will take this opportunity to say thank you to everyone who came here last night, and also all the council that, my council colleague that you are helping, supporting this resolution, including, I think that this make us more happier. I will get this result back to the Hmong community and tell them that we are the leader in this community, and we condemn that the policy is not rejected by us in our supporting that policy. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Lor. Again, thank you for this, for this resolution and your work, and Councilmember Worthman, and our council and our community, the fact that we, again, we're supporting and appreciative of the Hmong community and understand how important they are to Eau Claire, and certainly, you know, we look forward to that continuing, and I'm certainly proud to support this resolution. So, with that, if there's no other discussion, Council, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton? Aye.
Christoffersen?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 24 is an ordinance rezoning a property located at 3001 Gateway Drive from TC3 to C3P to adopt the general development plan with a site plan for commercial building. This item was postponed from Plaz Commission last week and therefore postponed until the meeting on March 23rd and 24th, if council wishes to do so. Is there a motion from council to postpone this item until March 23rd and 24th? Council Vice President Emanuel has moved, and Councilmember Worthman has seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregert?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton? Aye.
Christoffersen?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that item is postponed. We have one ordinance for introduction. It is an ordinance rezoning a property located northeast of Camden Court and Aspen Ridge Drive from TR1A and R1 to R1 and R2P, and to adopt the general development plan with site plan for twin homes. Does council wish to suspend the rules and take up this ordinance this evening? Seeing so much, so, so, not, so, none interest, I, it's been a long day already. If there is no objection, all right, then we're not going to. And then, Mr. Peters, do you have any announcements for us to bail me out of this?
Thank you, Council President Weld. Yes, I will remind you that next week, which is normally an off week for you, you have a work session to be working on the city manager recruitment and the RFPs, and that is at 5:15 on Tuesday in the North Conference Room, so hopefully you're all able to make that. And then a couple other things next week, on Thursday night, so again, that's on Tuesday night. On Thursday night then is the DEKI Downtown Eau Claire Awards, and there's also a City Council Candidate Forum, so you have options next week on Thursday night. And then, you wouldn't want to wait too much longer, since Friday morning, you can start right out with Exenissues as a legislative breakfast, so busy week next week as well.
Thank you. Mr. Peters, is there any other announcements from council? Seeing none, and if there is no objection from council, we are adjourned.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the City of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912, or TDD 715-839-1689, or write, Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148.